Hello and welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. This is Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, and we're at the Veterans Memorial Building. It's around 6:00 PM. This is 209 Surf Street in Morro Bay, so come on down and enjoy the fun. We have a full complement, so we have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. Could we please have a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand, face the flag, ready, begin. Okay, do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements? We do have one.
I just wanted to thank those who were responsible for getting the farmer's market back up and running again. That was a great thing, and the people responsible for the kite festival.
Great. Jess?
Just a reminder, there will be a WRF CAC Advisory Committee meeting, 5:00 this Thursday, at the Morro Bay Community Center. If you're interested, please come down and join us.
What time?
5:00 PM.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed. 5:00. Okay, this is the time we usually leave for public comment. I'll open the floor. This is for items that are not on the agenda, that we won't be hearing later, so if you have something you'd like to say to the commission, please step forward. You'll have three minutes.
Betty Winholtz, I'm grateful for this period because I cannot stay. I need to go back to work, and I have amended my work schedule just to come down here to see me, to talk to you for three minutes, because I feel so impassioned about this appeal that's before you tonight. And I think it's not about numbers and who's showing up, but it's about your duty and what you -- we feel you are obliged to do as our representatives on the Planning Commission. For me, I will restate to you what I wrote in part of my email to you today. I believe that what the applicant did was, quote, "directly detrimental to the health, the safety, the comfort, and the general welfare of the persons residing or working in that neighborhood," unquote. And that's the quote that we always put in all of our permits when we say, "Does this abide by the, you know, the general plan?" And this is the piece in the general plan that we judge everything by. And so, health, safety, and welfare. This was violated, I think, not only in terms of the permitting that didn't happen correctly, it was violated according to the direction that you gave the applicant when you approved his permit. He violated city rules in terms of the appeal process, and I think in the human decency rules in light of the actions that he took and have, I think, to some degree, threatened the people that live in that neighborhood, that play in that area. So I would just remind you that based on the California Resource Code and the city's advisory handbook, that the commission is obliged, it's obligated, to protect the Morro Bay residents and correct poor implementation of city policies. Plus, I hope that you will demonstrate tonight that you are -- those are your values and that that's what you have sworn to uphold when you swore to uphold the Constitution when you took your office, your oath of office. And so, I would remind you that you're an independent body. The only restriction you have is that which is granted to you or restricted to you by the Constitution and the Resource Code. It's not limited to what staff has put into the staff report. So please feel free to do what you think is appropriate and best for the public interest, for the public welfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be hearing this item shortly, so is there anybody else that would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, move forward. Thank you. Item A1, A2, and A3 are on the consent calendar. Do we have anybody that would like to pull an item or discuss any of those items?
Point of order? Can we comment on the consent calendar?
No. We usually don't have a comment on the dissent calendar. Only that -- we usually don't take public comment on the consent calendar.
Counsel does.
Counsel does, yeah. We usually don't. So Scott should?
So I would -- normally, I think, if people wanted to comment, they would comment during public comment and do it, but if you'd like, you can open it up for the consent and take public comment. Somebody wants to speak to it, I think it's fine.
Okay.
It's appropriate, we don't need to stop folks from commenting.
Okay, we'll open up public comment again for that.
My name is Jeff Heller, and thank you for taking my comments here. I'm here tonight as a citizen of Morro Bay, not as a councilman. I certainly don't represent everyone's opinion on the council. I might even tell you my opinion on the council. But I want to talk to a consent item A2. For many people, including me, the new sewer project is the most consequential infrastructure issue Morro Bay is going to deal with for a very, very long time. And while there have been a few joint meetings with the -- your commission, as well as the PWAAB and the WEFAC, including the one from July 3rd of 2018, the city has chosen to cancel almost every individual WRF CAC meeting since July 3rd, 2018. And for the record, let it show that the last regularly scheduled WRF CAC meeting was December 17th, 2018. Considering the cost and scale and significance of this infrastructure project, and considering that the city has unilaterally canceled eight of the last nine WRF CAC meetings, I am at a loss as to how long -- how can it be that it's taken the city 10 months to bring forward meeting minutes from the joint meeting that you had in July, July 3rd, 2018? I'm at a loss. I don't know, I'm not looking to have heads roll, but on a project this important, with the Citizens Advisory Committee that has been so maligned and basically all meetings canceled with the exception of one over the last 10 months, why has it taken 10 months to get the minutes done? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak to the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. All right. Okay, anybody wish to discuss or pull any of the items on the consent calendar?
I think discussions warranted. I agree with Mr. Heller's assessment of the minutes. I think they did take too long. You know, that is, when I saw that they -- we hadn't seen them yet, I was kind of the same opinion. So maybe we can discuss this with staff afterwards and see what we can do to help facilitate this in the future and prioritize these types of minutes. I think it was more of an, if you don't mind, hold me for a second.
Yeah, I was going to pose a question just now.
My understanding was it was more of an issue of who is doing the minutes? And it was, you know, it was elapsed internally, I think. We thought, you know, I think there was some thought that the administrative staff or the planning division would be doing it, and then there was some thoughts that the minutes were going to be done by administrative staff for the Public Works Department, and so that's what happened. I think both thought that the minutes had been prepared, and then when it turned out that we didn't have them, they had to go back and make them, bring them forward. It was simply a mistake.
Okay.
Seems very plausible.
So Scott, would it have changed anything? I mean, as far as, we haven't had any other further action on this item, so not having the minutes, do you see any detriment to it?
Sorry, I think the YouTube video was up. I mean, it's unfortunate, we should have gotten the minutes up for it. I'm not making any excuses. I'm just saying, you know, in my evaluation, that's what it appeared to me as to what happened. In fact, I think we actually had the minutes complete for a while, we just, they just hadn't been distributed for adoption. And in fact, so we kind of, you know, lost track there a couple of different times of it, because we had talked about it internally a couple of months ago, and then it took it now to bring it forward. So again, I apologize for the, you know, bringing it forward late, but we did get it done, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
And kind of speaking more to Mr. Heller's other comments, so there has been some cancellations of meetings for the WRF CAC, and it's been told to me, and I don't know this to be factually true, but the, you know, the discussion around that was, there was nothing really to discuss. So I will bring up the wishes of the community that even if there's nothing to discuss, maybe it's better to get together and discuss why there's nothing to discuss. So, point taken, Mr. Heller.
Anybody else?
The only question I have is, since I wasn't here for that meeting, should I abstain on that vote?
You're not required to, but you can if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay, the other items? Any questions on the other items? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent calendar.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussions on the motion in a second? Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to public hearings, this is item B1. Do we have a -- any ex parte communication on this? Okay. So let's have a staff report, if we may.
All right, here we go. We're here to review an appeal of a minor modification permit that was issued as an amendment to the original permit provided in June 2018. An important fact to note is that the minor modification work was done without valid permits a day or two after the appeal was filed. The property owners requested that some additional scope be added to the original permit. Fire hose sheds and associated private-owned fire hydrants were to be removed. Based on the scope of the original project, this added work was considered minor and was processed pursuant to a standard condition of approval stating that any minor change may be approved by the Community Development Director. Any substantial change will require the filing of an application for amendment. The request was deemed as a minor modification to the existing permit, processed administratively, which included notice to the residents within 1,000 feet of the site. This is a photograph of one of the sheds. Here are two other sheds and the fire hydrants adjacent to them. The proposed method of removal was to unbolt the sheds, which were asbestos-coated steel framing covered with lead paint. From the foundation, lift them intact with equipment and place them in a truck for appropriate disposal. No remediation work was planned to be done on-site. Staff met with neighbors on the site February 8th, including one of the appellants, and as a result of the meeting, a condition was added requiring that the shed in the esha be wrapped prior to removal. The contractor who removed the sheds said they wrapped all three sheds prior to removal. This is an overview of the site, and the three, not as easy to read as I would like, little stars that are yellow with red are the locations of the three sheds and the three adjacent fire hydrants. The minor modification permit was issued February 14th, 2019, following a 10-day public notification period that expired February 10th. The permit issuance has a 10-day appeal period that expired Monday, February 25th. Three appeals were filed on that day. The owners had the sheds removed on or about February 26th or 27th without any valid permits. This is a photo of the former location of the shed and the fire hydrant in the esha. March 1, staff was notified that the sheds had been removed from the site. Staff visited the site and noted very little disturbance in the area of the shed removals. As staff investigated how, when, who did the work, staff discovered that the fire hydrants had been removed in December by the primary contractor doing the original scope of work. The appeal complaints, this is issue number one. All asbestos-containing structures be immediately wrapped and sealed by a certified asbestos consultant to prevent any release of asbestos fibers. The firm that did the work, Portney Environmental and Demolition, is licensed through the Department of Occupational Safety and Health, which is a state agency, and they are a certified asbestos contractor with clearance for abatement, containment, encapsulation, removal, and disposal. Portney is also certified for lead handling through EPA, which is a federal agency. Appeal issue two. The permit should be rescinded and submitted for Planning Commission decision. The scope of work was determined to be a minor change in the project, which could be processed under the standard condition of approval for minor changes in scope. The application was reviewed, and conditions of approval were created related to this specific scope of work. Public notification was sent to occupants' owners within 1,000-foot radius on January 30th, as well as an on-site posting. Appeal issue number three. The permit application should be immediately heard by the Planning Commission and a decision made in accordance with laws to expedite removal of all asbestos structures. In comparison to the primary scope of work, this was a minor addition to the original scope. The permit approval included new conditions of approval and was also subject to all of the original permit conditions of approval, including mitigation and monitoring plans, all of which was approved by Planning Commission in June 2018. The mitigation and monitoring plan included a process for handling and disposal of hazardous waste. Appeal issue four. The project should be halted until all federal and state requirements for demolition of hazardous materials are carried out. The contractor who performed the work had the necessary federal and state licenses and certifications to perform the asbestos removal work. Appeal issue number five. The property owner should be required to pay all fines for unpermitted removal of the trees and fire hydrants on the property. The tree removal related to the original permit and was addressed through the additional tree replacement mitigation imposed with that permit, which we felt was more effective than a $100 fine. The fire hydrant removal was a misunderstanding, however, it was reasonable to expect that it would be part of the original scope since that contractor removed the tank, the water tank, and capped the related water lines supplying the private hydrants. The removal of the fire hydrants was done in conformance with the conditions of approval in the mitigation and monitoring program, and it was all done before nesting season. Appeal number six, issue number six. Removal of all remaining structures should be planned and supervised by a certified asbestos consultant as required by state and federal law. The removal of the sheds was performed by a properly licensed asbestos, certified asbestos consultant contractor. No other buildings have been part of any request for removal. Appeal issue seven. No activity should be allowed on-site during nesting season. The requirement, which is mitigation measure BR6, that was part of the original permit, is that no trees or tree trimming take place during nesting season, which is February 1 to June 30th. Additionally, if work is to be performed during nesting season, it requires nesting survey one week before the work is to commence to determine if there are any active nesting birds, so they can impose a necessary buffer and mitigation plans prior to the work. The nesting survey was a condition of the minor modification permit conditions of approval. However, since the work was done, the city required the owner, post having the work done, to engage an environmental consultant for post-work survey. PACS Environmental sent a wildlife biologist to do a post-demo survey and found that in the esh, there was no significant impact to vegetation or soil. One nesting pair of great-horned owls were observed in the grove of trees where the water tank was previously located prior to removal. The nest location was approximately 385 feet from the closest shed. Post-demolition, the nest continued to be active, and both owls were observed. The after-the-fact permit requirement, so this is just a little background for you, it's not really related to the appeal, but this is really a little background of what has been done since the work was completed without valid permits. The owner explained that they scheduled the work, not understanding the appeal timeline after the permit was issued. The city's reaction was to post a stop-work order on the site and request several post-demolition reports and verifications, including verification of the contractor qualifications, confirmation of the means and the methods used to remove the sheds, receipt from the disposal site confirming receipt of the sheds, a biological and wildlife post-demo site assessment and soil testing. The appellant included documentation that has a lot of questions and concerns related to the original permitted scope of work, which is almost complete. The staff is available to answer questions about that permit outside of this hearing, but my understanding is, the purpose of this hearing is to consider the appeal of the minor modification permit. The appeal was filed before the work was completed, so the subject of the appeal is the city's review and approval process, the content of the permit conditions, and the scope of work subject to the permit. However, the work was done without valid permits, so the appellant's request for relief or action, which was to rescind the permit, to encase the asbestos structures, and to remove the fire hydrants from the scope of work listed in the permit, can no longer be granted. As such, staff recommends denial of the appeal by accepting Planning Commission Resolution 08-19.
Okay, thank you. For a question here, Scott, per point of order. Were there one or three appeals? Should we allow public comment for?
There were three separate appeals.
Okay, so each of the appeal appellants, has their 10 minutes to speak to this, or should it be combined?
I think that's how we should handle it.
Okay.
And that's what they're requesting, I believe, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. Is that okay with the rest of you guys?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, questions for staff?
I have a few, just so I can get some of the details straight in my head. So it seems that the way that the asbestos was removed is in accordance with established physical safety procedures, irrespective of if it was done with a permit or without a permit. The physical removal was done in accordance with established safety procedures, is that correct?
We weren't there, and there was no monitoring while it was going on, but it was done by a local qualified licensed firm, and from site observation, immediately after the sheds were removed, it looked clean, like someone followed the conditions of approval in their means and methods of removing the sheds.
And the wrapping of the structure, which seemed to be an amendment and added, I take it that part of the standard physical safety procedure would not involve wrapping of the structure, and that this was something that the local residents asked for and?
They did ask for it. I think generally, the city doesn't want to tell a contractor what the means and methods are. They would rather tell them what the goals are and require qualifications so the contractor would know how to handle it. So in this case, this contractor is licensed federally and state for handling of asbestos, and I think they would know how to handle it. So they took it upon themselves to wrap all three sheds.
Oh, so that came as their suggestion?
Yes.
I see, okay. Another question. So the removal was done after the permit was granted and after the appeal, which effectively, I guess, has stopped the permit. And the applicant, there's no evidence that the applicant had notice or constructive notice of this appeal? I mean, do we have any? I'm curious as to, I'm curious as to that.
I sent them an email as soon as I was aware of the appeal. Now, whether they received the email, I mean, I wasn't expecting it to be that time-sensitive. I was expecting that they would respond to their email like they normally do. I didn't hear a response, but I did notify them via email as soon as I knew.
So that question is kind of open as to whether the applicant had notice, or even constructive notice, and whether he removed the sheds knowing that there was appeal or removed the sheds?
Correct.
Not knowing that there was an appeal. Okay, you answered my question about the bird business. There's, so again, I guess I think I know the answer. There's still one shed remaining with asbestos, and that's in the esh area, is that correct?
There's one garage building, shop building, that appears to be of the same age, construction type, and condition as the sheds that were removed. There's also another garage building that I don't believe has been tested, and there's a CMU brick building that has been tested, and it has standard 1950 asbestos-containing materials, flooring, windows, sealant.
So there might be as many as, there might be as many as three structures, two of which we strongly suspect have asbestos, but perhaps all three?
I think, two we know, but the garage building appears to be in the same condition and construction as the sheds. The CMU office building was also originally tested in 2016, but it has pretty standard flooring, mastic, carpet, that type of asbestos that's pretty common for houses built prior to the 70s.
Okay, and I'm getting towards the end of mine, but, and I was certainly present during the original, when the original permit was granted, as well as several of the other commission members. I don't recall any explicit discussion explicitly of removing asbestos from the sheds. I do recall that the sheds were excluded from the original permit. I don't recall any discussion, knowledge, whatever, that there might be asbestos in those sheds. Is that correct? Did I miss something?
No, there was no discussion about the sheds because they were not part of the scope.
Okay, so we have no real knowledge as to whether the applicants knew at that time that there was or might be asbestos in it?
We have all of the environmental documents. The mitigated negative declaration talks about likely asbestos and lead-based paint on the site, and there was also a 2016 test report from a firm out of Fresno that concluded that the sheds did have asbestos over steel and lead-based paint.
Okay. And then my final question is, I suspect that when all this is settled, there'll be sort of one sort of final inspection to sort of look to see if in fact there are no residues and before there's a final write-off on the?
There's an additional full-site site assessment and possibly some more soil testing.
Okay. Jesse, you have questions?
Yes, I have a few. So we do have a qualified licensed firm that is licensed in this, both federally and state to do asbestos mitigation, right? Do they have a mandate to have third-party monitoring during that asbestos removal?
The condition of approval was to have a biologist on the site when they were removing the shed in the esh, and that does not appear to have occurred. There was also supposed to be a pre-construction meeting, including city of Morro Bay staff and the contractors and the biologists on the site to talk about how the work was going to be performed, and that also did not occur.
So it's safe to say they violated the conditions of approval?
They removed the sheds without valid permits, correct.
In addition to that, they violated the conditions?
Yes.
Of approval that were in place that required monitoring during the asbestos removal?
A few of them, yes, correct.
Okay, so would it be safe to say that, well, I'll get to that. So they also have a air pollution control district reporting requirement. Do you know if there are any adverse requirements coming from that office?
Yes, I have spoken to them. They issued an NOV, which is a notice of violation, because they weren't pre-notified of the shed removal. They have since received documentation from either Portney or the owner, and they appear satisfied and think that they're going to clear the notice of violation. There's also-- There's also a notice of violation that was filed by Slow County Environmental Health, and that also has to do with specific identification of the type of asbestos included in the sheds, whether it was friable or non-friable. And that's not specifically known at this time, but that is what the owner and Portney need to resolve in order to clear that notice of violation for the Slow County Environmental Health.
And specifically, it's not known because they disposed of this asbestos without proper paperwork, I assume?
No, I think the paperwork was intact. I just don't know if they tested, and I've called Portney, they didn't call me back. But it really is under the jurisdiction of Slow County Environmental Health.
Right. So the timeline of the stop work, so as I understand it, the stop work was posted on February 28th. Is that correct?
I'm guessing it was March 1st. Maybe it was February 28th.
So am I to understand that they had a stop work posted and worked in spite of the posted stop work?
No, that was after the sheds were removed.
Okay. And, well, I guess there's more discussion.
Okay. Michael? I guess my main question is, this certified bona fide agent who removed this somehow acted without a permit in hand, right? And this certified bona fide agent has no third-party verification of what they did. Is that true?
What do you mean, third-party verification?
Well, there was no inspector, there was no biologist on the site.
Oh, correct.
There was no third-party there to verify that they did anything they said they did.
Correct.
And then the other thing is, the discussion with the community representatives on the site, was the nature of the asbestos brought up, or was it just, we're taking down these sheds?
No, they were concerned about the lead-based paint and the asbestos, but primarily just the one shed in the esch.
Okay, that's all I have.
Susan?
So they did testing in 2016, decided it was asbestos. Was there a determination at that point whether it was or was not friable? Because I'm seeing some things in some of these statements that say it was determined to be friable.
It's inconsistent, but that one report from the firm in Fresno that people are talking about in 2016 shows that the asbestos felt-covered steel siding and possibly roofing was friable.
Okay.
My recollection, we had an industrial hygienist who was responsible for safety conditions and monitoring on-site for the project?
No, because the... He was under contract for the primary original scope of work, which the site work had concluded, and all that was left was paperwork and formalities to clear all of the permit conditions. This additional scope of work, the owner wanted a different contractor and was not required to have monitoring if he used a qualified asbestos removal firm.
Was that approval... Okay, that seems like it's contradictory to what our original intent was on the original permit. The original intent was to have an industrial hygienist, third-party monitor all work done on the site. And those clearly, those buildings were clearly marked on the original plot plan as to remain. So where, you know, my question is, where did the lessening of restrictions or monitoring come from? Did it come from you, or did it come from staff, or did it come from the contractor?
So Michael is here, the contractor, I don't think is here. Portney, constructor, environmental, is not here. But Michael is here. He and I talked about the sheds, and based on the method that they were going to be using to remove them, my recollection is that Michael didn't think monitoring was required. Now, Michael is here, and he can speak for himself.
I'm sure he'll come forward in public comment. Okay, that's questions for staff. We'll open this up for public comment.
And actually, Michael and I think Oliver are here on behalf of the owner. I don't know if they have an opportunity to speak.
Okay. So we have three appeals here. So we'll have the appellants come forward first, and if you would, if you have overlapping or, you know, I would request that you... You don't go over the same items three times, if you would, so... But you'll have 10 minutes to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm starting to get nervous.
Okay, please, please. Yeah, don't be scared, but please state your name.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners and City Staff. I'm Kristin Hedland of Morro Bay, and I've lived here for 29 years. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this very important subject. I live across the street from 3300 Panorama, the demolition site. The neighbors and I have been involved with this project since August of 2016. This appeal isn't about the de minimis or minimal project. It is not just the removal of the few sheds and fire hydrants. It's about the illegal concealment and illegal removal of three dangerous friable asbestos structures and the unpermitted illegal removal of the private fire hydrants. On May 13th of 2016, inspection by the hazardous management services identified 1,300 square feet of friable asbestos in the form of the structures on the site. And I have the report here with the structures they're referring to. Under federal law, these asbestos structures were required to be removed first before disturbance or release of microscopic asbestos fibers by the demolition, in which this case was the ground vibration and air disturbance caused by the pounding and collapsing of the jet fuel tanks. The existence, the existence, existance of toxic asbestos structures on the site was omitted from the permit application, omitted from the permit, from the environmental review, from the yellow postcard notice to the public, omitted from the staff report, omitted from the monthly list of action-ready projects, omitted from the planning commission resolution to approve the permit. All of these documents misinform the public that the project was to remove three small sheds. The only reason we found out about the reading of... The only reason we found out about it was reading the small print on the graphic demolition plan that asbestos structures would be processed offsite. Then on February 19th, a meeting with the community development department, we were told that the structures were in fact made of asbestos. What is the result of not disclosing the existence of these friable asbestos structures? On March 21st, the Air Pollution Control District inspection on the site concluded that the asbestos of the structures was friable, and that the asbestos on the remaining building appeared to be friable. On March 8th, 2019, the Air Pollution Control District issued a notice of violation for failure to thoroughly inspect for the presence of asbestos prior to demolition and failure to provide written notification prior to the demolition. On March 22nd, the APCD issued another notice of violation for failure to provide notification 10 days working before demolition of asbestos structures. On April 22nd, the County Public Health issued notice of violation for failure to submit after three requests, pipe and tank atmosphere monitoring, soil sampling laboratory results and assessment reports, waste disposal and resonant contaminated soil and hazardous waste, and for the account of the discrepancy between the May 16th identification of friable asbestos buildings on the site and the February 7th, 2019 manifest for removal of non-friable asbestos. The hearing for this violation is on June 7th at 10:00 a.m. with San Luis Obispo Environmental Public Health. The staff report does not provide any of this information, and even though it is common knowledge at this point that this permit was for the removal of toxic hazardous waste, the staff report for this hearing still admits the fact that this permit was for removal of toxic asbestos structures and misinforms and attempts to mislead the public and the planning commission that this is only a minor modification of the existing permit to remove three small structures. Please hold the appeal and the direct staff to schedule a hearing at which the original demolition coastal development permit will be reassessed in light of the new information. For me, the best way to explain the project is to show you some photos from the beginning to the end of where we're at. There were several violations that occurred on the property, and I would like to say that in June of 2017, some people showed up during nesting season and removed trees out of the esch. And then we move on, and then there was a permit that was asked by the applicant to live in a trailer. The applicant was denied, but there was someone living in the trailer, in the garage. And then we had another, so that was a permit violation. And then, when it came to us getting this notification, us neighbors, we got the notification of what was going to occur on this yellow card, and they said they were going to remove three fire hydrants. Well, it turns out that the fire hydrants were removed in December of 2018. And so because we felt that we did not receive any information related to the demolition because the community development department was waiting to hear from the public, we filed our appeal. And after we filed, two days after we filed our appeal, the sheds were removed from the property illegally. And so I'd like to have, I'd like to show you my video. So this right here... So we'll just go through the videos. This is, in June of 2017, some workers showed up on the property during nesting season, and on the weekend, which is a normal thing, they went around, and all those trees that have the underline, they removed them without a permit. So right here, this is a photo of the workers in the esch. They were jumping back and forth in the stream, and I feel like I didn't... I notified the police, I notified the fire department, I notified the community development department, and I was told that it's only a $100 fine, it's not a big deal. So during the demolition project, this is how they started the demolition project.
I didn't know, of course, is that all...
In the site plan, we were told that there were chairs, that they would approach the tanks, and cut them, and let them fall, but that did not occur. What they did was, they went around, and they pounded on that tank, all the way around until it collapsed. And the neighbors had to deal with the sound of this thing going off. It goes on and on, so... So this is what the tanks looked like after that machine went around, pounded on it until it caved in, and then the whole structure collapsed, and then the machinery they brought in was tall enough to go in and start clipping and putting the... I'm assuming they put the metal on the inside. And so this is what the tank looked like. This is a south side tank, and then we have a north side tank also that they did the same thing. So here we have, during the demolition project, this is dust that was flying through the air when they were demolishing the north tank. So this is, if you take a note, up on the top, it says, it gives a date of December... I can't read that far. December 17th. This is photos taken by someone working on-site who provided them to the community development department. And so we have three photos. They took photos, they removed the fire hydrants, yet we got this application that they wanted to remove them in February. This is the one at the entrance of the property, and you see the fire hydrant laying on the And this is the yellow card that all the neighbors got, where you have the yellow card, this that everyone sees in the handouts in the Tribune. There's no mention of asbestos, for the public to be informed.
Okay. If you'd please conclude.
Yes. So I just want to say to you, this is, there were several violations, and we have two outside agencies that are going to follow up. They've issued violations, and Mr. Portney over there in Paso, he paid his violation, and he's sorry that, for what he did, but I really appreciate your questions and your concern and for the safety of us in North Morro Bay and the esch where all the wildlife live. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Carol Truesdale, and welcome to the new staff member, Susan Stewart. First time I've talked before you and Jesse. First and foremost, I'm a homeowner, and I've lived here since 1995. I want to go on record saying I know the Morro Bay stakeholders have ever been adverse to the demolition project located at 3300 Panorama, Morro Bay, California, as long as the procedures follow due process of the laws and regulations stipulated by the various government agencies, et cetera, whereby protecting the esch area, residents, and financially protecting the City of Morro Bay for any type of failure to perform the demolition correctly according to these laws. Our appeal was based on the asbestos found on the site and not disclosed to the residents, et cetera, until February 2019. During 2016, the planning staff knew the fact that on the friable asbestos structures on-site based on the documents submitted, the notice sent to residents surround the site did not indicate any asbestos in their description. In addition, the planning department's current and vast project tracking sheets omitted the fact that these structures contained asbestos. After receiving information about the issuance of the minor addendum to the existing permit, I reached out to Scott Graham on February 6, 2019, addressing my concerns and asked for a meeting. Finally, on February 19, 2019, I was able to meet with Scott along with Chris Hedland, Cynthia Howley, and Nancy Hubbard. It was after my meeting with the members of the planning staff that on February 20th, I contacted the Air Pollution Control District regarding my concerns about asbestos removal and how toxic these substances are to humans and wildlife, which slowly can lead to a painful death of mesothelioma. To me personally and to other members of the Morro Bay stakeholders, a minor modification to the existing CPO 500 and UPO 440 was not acceptable, and hence our appeal to discuss with planning commission members about the additional demolition on the project. I have received numerous files from the APCD, which included documents from the EPA and public health dated early 2016, when the applicant applied for permits and notified these public health agencies of their plans to redevelop the reference property to a residential land use. Further information was given to the applicant on April 29, 2016, stipulating the need to conduct further assessment on the direction of the Department of Toxic Substance Control DTSC for redevelopment. It was stated in writing by the applicant, site will be used for residential purposes upon the completion of the closure. On December 14, 2018, the APCD sent a letter to the applicant and planning staff from Tim Fuze, Inspector, addressing a violation that was reported. I spoke with Oliver Reese, who was on-site, not I, but Mr. Fuze. He stated that they were pulling off the site shortly as all of the demolition work was being completed. I asked when they were planning to remove the other structures, and he stated that there were currently no plans to conduct further demolition. What an interesting comment, especially since the notice to the residents was sent out in January 2019 advising further demolition. Let's fast-track back to June 2018, when the planning commission gave permission for the original permit, the removal of tanks and pipes only, nothing yet, nothing else. Yet during this demolition process, cement stairs, metal structures, and fire hydrants removed without permitting. Next, the applicant... Next, the applicant wanted to take out a few more items, which were of toxic contents, especially asbestos. The city planning director, by his signature authority, issued the minor addendum permit. The applicant was to sign the application, and failure to do so made the permit null and void. On February 25, the Morro Bay stakeholders appealed the permit to bring our concerns to the planning commissions and submit our documentation according to the required procedures. On February 28, we notified the planning director, I personally delivered a letter to Scott Graham, that these toxic structures were removed from the property without a permit. He was surprised and immediately put a stop work order on the property fence. It's not up to the neighbors and caring citizens to watch over the demolition of superfund site filled with toxic materials. The Panorama project has been a dicey from the beginning. Segmenting, demolition, circumventing CEQA rules and regulations is serious. The violations of the ESHA area complaints from the neighbors during demolition, the imploding of the fuel water tanks by pounding upon them rather than scissoring them down, released toxic lead paint into the environment, ground thereby impacting neighbors and wildlife. The removal of the toxic structure resulted in a violation assessed to the applicant who paid $500, and to the company, Portney, by the APCD for failing to show due required procedures. Documents disclaiming my comments are included in this package I'm leaving with you this evening, as I'm not getting into the weeds with how the whole removal of the toxic sheds were handled, as the documents speak for themselves. What I'm concerned about is that planning staff knew that the asbestos was toxic and friable and withheld the information from their documentation disseminated to the planning commissioners and residents. Currently, the County of San Luis Obispo Health Agency Department has issued a notice of violation hazard material storage, tank closure, and the date for the hearing is June 7. If these two public agencies have found violations in the demolition process of this project, why is it that the planning staff does not take these violations seriously and enforce them according to their laws? I sent a letter to Robert Teft, former chair to this commission, who is no longer alive, on July 17, 2017, addressing my concerns about violations surrounding this project, especially in the ESHA area. A copy of this letter is also included in this package. And the comments made by Scott Graham that were astounding to me. And during the demolition process, several of the residents surrounding this project site contacted me with their concerns of trucks using wrong streets for ingress and egress, trucks not covered with toxic, covered with toxidubree leaving the site, noise, and the list continues. People who voiced their concerns to me, I could not help them and sent them to the planning department to address their concerns. They informed me that Mr. Graham basically dismissed their concerns. If the APCD and the County of San Luis Obispo have taken interest and addressed concerns in the violations surrounding how this toxic superfund site demolition was handled, our planning department should do as well. I'm asking the planning commissioners to take a long, hard look at this overall project, our concerns, violations, surround the demolition process, rescind the original permit, including modification permit, and ask that an EIR be required on this project, which should have been the correct requirement procedure processes at the very beginning in the protection of the current and future residents, ESHA area, and wildlife surrounding this site. I leave you with this one thought so eloquently stated by David Brooks. "Centuries ago, our founders created a system of laws, not men. In our system of government, there are procedures in place based on certain values, impartiality, respect for institutions, the idea that a public office is a public trust, not a private bubble." Thank you. And here are the documents, including my statement.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm Cynthia Hawley, here on behalf of the appellant, and specifically on behalf of Dan Sedley. There was, it was said tonight that there was no mention of the asbestos because they were part of the, not part of the scope of the project, but under federal law, these asbestos structures were required to be removed first. Federal law requires that a certified asbestos consultant to go to a demolition site and survey the entire site to find out if any asbestos is on the site, and if any asbestos is on the site, it is to be removed before the demolition starts, so it's not disturbed by the demolition. In this case, especially this friable, very fragile asbestos was affected by, was not removed prior, in violation of federal law, and it was known to be there. Staff knew it was there. Everybody knows it was there now. And it was, it was affected by what you saw, the pounding and the vibrations that that sent into the ground, and also the uncontrolled dust. The dust was not controlled here, like it was supposed to have been controlled. The uncontrolled dust that blew through where the asbestos structures were. Not only that, but the asbestos, the friable 300, 1300 square feet of it was identified in 2016, and wasn't removed for three years by the city or the contractor. No one removed it, wasn't required to have been removed, and it was known to be there. Blowing asbestos fibers, microscopic fibers into the neighborhood and onto the people who walked there. This was never disclosed in all these, all the documents that were produced by the city, never disclosed. All of these documents listed by Kristen and by Carol, misinformed, this was actually misinforming the public that the project was to remove small sheds. This is, this is false information, and it's still being given to you as false information. It's important to understand that omission of the fact that the site contained toxic, friable asbestos structures is dishonest. That omission is dishonest. It's called deceit by omission under the law, and deceitful information in the public record documents is a felony under Penal Code 115, a felony. When actions like omitting critical information from public record documents are intentional, they are what's called official malfeasance, which is defined as intentional conduct that is wrongful or unlawful, especially by officials or public employees. The California Constitution, under the California Constitution, malfeasance is a high crime, along with bribery, perjury, and forgery. This is important stuff that we're talking about here. This was never a minor administrative permit amendment to small sheds and fire hydrants. This was a major project from the beginning for removal of highly toxic hazardous materials that weren't removed in the very first place. The procedures, well, it was also said that, how the structures were removed, that's not part of this appeal. Doesn't make any difference to this appeal, how the structures were removed. What does matter to this appeal is that the procedures for removing friable asbestos are governed by the federal EPA. None of these procedures are included in the administrative permit amendment. That's what's important about this appeal. For this reason alone, the permit should be denied. We believe that the community development department owes the planning commission and the public an explanation as to why the existence of toxic friable asbestos structures was not disclosed, and why the project has been and still is being misrepresented tonight as only a minimal, a minimal amendment removal of three sheds. Another standalone reason to uphold these appeals is the fact that the staff report does not address them. What you heard tonight was not our appeal. What you heard tonight was a list of action items that we requested based on the grounds of our appeal. The staff report does not, does not even mention any ground of our appeal. So it's impossible for them to say that there are no grounds for the appeal and that the appeal should be denied. They haven't even been addressed, and when you don't address something in a legal situation, it's not denied, that means they don't deny it, they concur. There's only, that's the only thing that can be assumed here. It claims, the staff report claims that the grounds for an appeal for the project approval are inadequate, when in reality, they weren't even discussed or mentioned at all in the staff report or in the analysis. In addition, the staff report does not deny the fact that the administrative permit amendment is an illegal segmentation of the demolition project. This was part of the appeal. Developers want to break projects up into segments in order to evade environmental review of the whole project. This is why segmentation is illegal under CEQA, and that's exactly what happened here. And it was admitted by saying that mention of the asbestos wasn't, wasn't mentioned because it was not part of the scope of this segment of the project. First, the site clearing by demolition was separated from the residential development, even though the developer stated in official documents that residential development would follow the demolition. Then the demolition itself was segmented. Removal of the highly toxic friable asbestos material was intentionally, according to the demolition plan, separated illegally from the tank and pipe demolition, and would have effectively evaded environmental review entirely under this administrative permit if it had not, if it had proceeded without challenge by this appeal. The staff report does not deny the fact that the planning director did not and does not have any authority under the municipal code to issue this administrative permit. This is also part of the appeal that was not addressed in the staff report. Under the city's municipal code, the planning director is authorized to issue an administrative permit only for development that is not located in the coastal development permit area. This project is located within the coastal development permit area, and the authority is not there for the planning director to issue an administrative permit. Second, the original permit of this regular coastal development permit was issued by the planning commission. Under the municipal code, application for amendments of coastal development permits shall be made by the planning commission. This is not subject to an administrative permit, and it never has been. When an action is taken without authority, as it was here, it is void. It never happened, and because of this, the administrative permit amendment should be rescinded as void. Basically, this whole project has been, has been bungled, and you may have gotten that tonight. The asbestos structures were not removed first to avoid disturbing and releasing the asbestos fibers. The permitted shearing of the tanks did not happen. The developer was allowed to bash the tanks into collapsing. There was no permit amendment to bash the tanks into collapsing, and no environmental review of imploding the tanks. There was no dust control, as you could see, as the tanks were bashed, and dust containing highly toxic lead particles from the shattered and pulverized tank paint rose into the air and blew into neighboring houses in sensitive habitat. This is a superfund site. Asbestos has been literally treated as if nothing, as if it was nothing, when it's deadly, it's deadly. And there is still three more asbestos structures on the site that have also been segmented from the, from the site clearing, which is basically what this is. Tonight, we ask you to uphold this appeal, deny the administrative permit amendment, and direct staff to place this matter on the demolition permit on the future planning commission agenda for review. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak for the, would it be the applicant, for the applicant on this permit? No?
Hello, good evening. My name's Oliver Reese, I'm with Bedford Demolition. We did the, the original demolition of the tanks, and the pumps and the pump house area and the water pumps. So I wanted to talk about a couple of things, if that's okay. The original thing that we're here for was part of the fire hydrants removal. We just assumed that that was part of the pumps and the water system that we were taking out anyway. So we did remove those, we removed them in early December. I'm the one that sent the pictures to Nancy, so she could see that we, how we capped the pipes that were left in the ground. We take full responsibility for that, so we just, we actually thought it was under our original permit. The idea of removing the sheds didn't even come up until we did a walkthrough with the owners sometime mid-December, maybe late December, I don't remember exactly. I would have to check my notebooks. But at that point, we had a discussion about the sheds, and I recommended that he hire a license contractor to remove those. So whether or not he knew that the fire hydrants were already removed or not, I can't tell you. I can't speak to that for him. But a couple of things too, the site is not a superfund site, to my knowledge. It's never been declared a superfund site. And then, with regard to a couple of the other things that have been mentioned, Michael Tiffany can talk about the water suppression that we use for dust control and things of those measures, so he can, he can address that. But we did not pound the tanks down. We pounded the tanks to make a penetration. Once the penetration was made, and by the way, that was the shear that was pounding, it wasn't just a pounder. The tanks were penetrated, a hole was created, and then we went ahead and started cutting. The reason we did that is so that we could avoid torch cutting on lead paint, so, and removing that lead paint that was, that was necessary for us to torch cut. So we, it took maybe, the first time, it did take about 20, 30 minutes, and we finally pierced it and then started cutting it. The second tank, I think we pierced it in about two and a half, maybe three minutes. So, just to kind of clear a couple of things there, and then we have, whatever you need for that, I've got video documentation, photo documentation, things of that nature. Did you have any questions for me?
We'll probably call you back up after.
Okay.
At the end of public comment.
Okay. If you have any, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
So, stay, stay in the, stay in the room, please. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak for the applicant?
Excuse my voice. I'm, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the applicant. I'm here to make myself available of any questions that you might have. I was working on behalf of the city throughout the project until the completion of the tank removal. I was reporting to Nancy. I was collecting data, I was collecting monitoring data and observations throughout the whole process. If you have any questions about the demolition process, you can ask me. I have, I'm a certified asbestos consultant, however, I was not asked by the applicant or by the city to evaluate those sheds or participate in their removal, so I don't have any direct knowledge of that. I observed the sheds. I was not aware of the prior 2016 inspection of them. Nancy asked us to go out to the site after this came up and inspect around the shed locations. She has our report of our findings. We did find small quantities of paint debris, including the asbestos that's part of the paint system on them. But I never really inspected those sheds prior to demolishing them, and nobody notified me that they were going to do that. So if you have any questions, you can ask me now or later.
Okay, I think we'll reserve the right to bring you up after further public comment. Could you, could you please state your name again? I don't think anybody got it.
Michael Tiffany.
Michael Tiffany.
I'm a certified industrial hygienist that the city hired to do the monitoring.
Just one question before you go, though, I'm sorry. When did your monitoring stop?
It stopped on the last day of the demolition removal work. It was earlier mid-December. I'd have to look at my calendar and see.
Okay, if you could check on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What company do you represent?
My company is Analytical Consulting Group.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Analytical Consulting Group.
Thank you, sir.
I'm asking the planning commission to support the appeal on this. When I sat on the planning commission there, we listened to this project and wanted... When I sat on the planning commission there, we listened to this project, and one of the things that I stated that, in my experience, I worked on military facilities. Now, I don't know about this superfund, but we can call this a military facility. And when you work on a facility like that, environmental issues take a way back seat to the task at hand. For instance, like in Vandenberg, where I worked, if you spilled some MEK or whatever, you don't call anybody because your mission is to get a satellite up in orbit. That's the main thing. So when I look at, when I was up there and I saw that, you know, this project always should have had an EIR, in my opinion, just by the nature. I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer. But now, as this thing progressed, I think that there is enough evidence to suggest that, you know, any goodwill or good faith that was issued or benefit of the doubt is pretty much out the window. And I think that, you know, as obligation to our citizenry, you should uphold this appeal.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff Heller speaking as a citizen tonight. I did have an ex parte discussion with the community development director and the planner in charge of this project a number of months ago, when some citizens called me and were concerned about how the project was being managed. A way of background for those of you who haven't heard this before, I've spent the last 35 years or so managing the design and construction of projects, starting with very small projects, obviously, when I was younger, and moving up to large projects, publicly funded projects, the most recent of which was the $239 million design-built Polly Canyon Village at Cal Poly as program manager. I've also worked for a number of school districts, Los Angeles Unified School District, LA Unified School District, Long Beach City College, all of which had very strict policies relative to the management of hazardous materials, as most of you know or had experience with these kinds of projects. There was never a moment at any of these agencies over the last 35 years where there was anything more important than how to manage these materials. I don't know all the details of this. I just know some of them. I do know in my conversations with, with the community development department that they acknowledged that they were not going to fine the owner for removing trees illegally because the fine was only $100. They've acknowledged here tonight that some work has been performed without permits. They've acknowledged that violations of the planning commission's conditions of approval have taken place. They've acknowledged that San Luis Obispo County Air Pollution Control District cited this project and this contractor for violations. San Luis Obispo County Public of Health cited this contractor for violations on this project. And yet, despite the thousands of hours that concerned public citizens have put in to bring this to light, I stand before you as a citizen, as a resident of Morro Bay, and reading the staff recommendation, asking that this planning commission uphold the administrative approval that has allowed this to happen. Our number one obligation is public safety. Our community development department has failed us over and over again, just on this project. Probably the biggest hazardous material project this city will ever address or come across has been completely mismanaged. And I say that based on 35 years of experience of managing projects like this, and the evidence that's been presented by the three appeals, in my mind, is overwhelming. I support all three appeals. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, please. No, you had your, your time. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this item? Okay. We'll, we'll keep public comment open. We'll open it up for questions to both the applicant and the appellate. So who would like to go first?
I have a question for, I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch the name, but the...
Michael?
No. The demolition, the representative for the demolition company, John spoke.
Oliver Reese.
Oliver. I'm sorry. Oliver, you mentioned that the torching technique, as opposed to sharing, would probably be even more disruptive, and that's why you chose to use the pounding, drilling, as opposed to torching. Am I correct in that?
Yeah. When we, when we began the process, we realized that torch cutting was probably not the best approach, so we stayed with the shears. And so in the process of it, we, we went ahead and said, okay, we will try to pierce this tank. If we can't pierce the tank, we will then torch it. So we figured we'd give it an effort to pierce the tank, and what we did is we were hitting it on a seam to create a, basically to crease it, and then it basically cut the tank by pressure. So we felt that doing that prior to trying to torch cut it was the best approach, and that's what we did.
And then there seems to be some disparity in that one of the members of the public was talking about a week of pounding, and I heard minutes of pounding on your part. So can you explain the disparity?
Well, there's no doubt that once, once we started shearing and material started falling in toward the tank, that there was noise. And it was, we described it kind of like an echo chamber, because where we entered, the back of the tank was toward the hillside, so every time a piece of metal would fall, it would just reverberated back out toward kind of the northwest section of the site. So it would, it would definitely, the sound would definitely reverberate to the west.
So the amount of actual pounding, where the most shaking would occur, just took place and did not take place over hours, over days?
So the, the rest of the pounding, which you could hear, because we would put, when we got down to the, to the floor section, so some of the roof section and some of the floor section, which was lighter material, we would roll it like a burrito, and he would hit that in order to make the, basically to get as much weight in the truck as we could so that we were making fewer trips, because truck traffic was also a concern. So we tried to make, we tried to minimize how much truck traffic we had. So in doing that, he would, he would densify those thinner type, those thinner, the thinner gauge material, and he would hit that. So there was some minor pounding, but that wasn't pounding on the tank. That was material that was already on the ground.
So if the neighbors are complaining about constant pounding, in all probability was this effort to condense the materials to fit it into trucks to make fewer truck trips. Okay.
Michael, could you please step forward also on this? You were monitoring the noise at this point?
I was monitoring the noise, and I have noise level data from the fence line every day. I'm preparing a report for Nancy with all the monitoring data. The shears, when they cut the steel, okay, there's a bang when it cuts. It's, it's more like a punch that bites out a big piece of steel, okay? And when the shears go through the steel, it bangs. And the drums, or the, the tanks are essentially gigantic drums, and every time the shear bites, there's a bang, and the, the whole tank vibrates. And then that piece of steel falls down. Ultimately, when they cut through things, the, the structure inside the tanks, the columns holding up the roof of the tank are not actually attached. So as the tank is taken down, those columns fall down. They're 40, 48 feet long, pieces of steel, they fall down. So yes, it was a noisy process, but impacting the tank, pounding on the tank was only for the initial penetration, like he says, to stretch the steel and spring open a, one of the seams so that the shear could get inside and start, start shearing it.
While you're up here, let me ask a couple of questions, if you don't mind, Joseph. Okay. What was your monitoring on lead, lead dust?
I have, I have monitoring on lead dust at the perimeter and closer to the tanks. I monitored for asbestos whenever we were doing soil disturbance in the, for instance, excavating through the berms for the roadway and so on. The, the site contains naturally occurring asbestos. That mountain is asbestos, okay? The, the fill on the site, the berms, contain naturally occurring asbestos. So we monitored air emissions from that, kept the soil wet when we were excavating it, and we didn't have any detectable asbestos fibers. The lead, we did detect some airborne lead within 50 feet of the tanks inside the work area, but we didn't detect any lead dust on the berms or at the fence line.
So the lead dust didn't, you know, didn't migrate off of site?
Correct. And it was, it was sporadic. I had a few samples that were close to the work that, that showed some lead dust. It was below the OSHA limit. We also put samplers on the workers, and they were all below the OSHA permissible exposure limit for lead.
And then what was your, what was your decibel readings on your, on your noise meters?
Its seldom exceeded about 68 decibels.
Okay. Is that continuous or impact?
That's, that's what you'd call the slow max, so averaged over a couple of seconds. The, the daily averages were in the 50 decibel range.
Okay.
Mid-50s typically. That was at the main gate, the northwest corner, near the truck entrance.
And there was also questions about loads being untarped, leaving the site?
When we saw that, we generally fired the trucker.
Okay.
Okay. How many truckers did you let go?
Two.
Two. A lot of the material leaving the site was concrete, for instance, that was not hazardous, but it was tarped anyways. It's DOT regulation, CHP regulation, that it be tarp. Some of the guys apparently left the site, decided to tarp down the road somewhere, but we sanctioned them for that. Yeah, I, I was everywhere I could be. I couldn't be everywhere at once, but when I observed something like that, I, I told Oliver. That was basically my job, was to keep an eye on things and tell Oliver if he needed to do something to comply.
And you had loading areas and basically grid or, or riprap sections for the trucks to, to basically demud as they entered the, the streets?
Yeah. They had, we had rock, what do you call that?
Riprap.
Yeah.
Those are easy.
Right. It was, what, four-inch rock, and then the rumble plates. It was all installed according to the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan that's also supposed to prevent trackout. And then I had them go out and sweep whenever I observed dirt off-site. The biggest problem we had was that some of those rocks would roll into the street as the trucks left the site.
A quick comment on our rumble strips and the way we set that construction entrance. Jim from County Health, he actually came out and took pictures, because he said, you're finally, finally somebody's doing it right. So he complimented us on our, our construction entrance, just so you know.
Okay. Do, Michael?
I want to ask you both. It's been stated that the federal policy is that asbestos goes out first. You weren't aware of the sheds being asbestos at this point when you were contracting?
When I looked at the sheds, I assumed they were asbestos. They looked like it to me. I've been doing asbestos inspections for 38 years. I was not asked to inspect them, but I looked at them, I, those are asbestos. And I had not seen the 2016 report. There was another report that was done on the tank and piping system, an asbestos report, and it warned of gaskets. We had a lead compliance plan and an asbestos compliance plan in the demolition work plan that was part of the permit conditions. We did not encounter any asbestos gaskets when we took apart the piping system. The lead paint was, was taken care of in accordance with the compliance plan. And of course, we had the naturally occurring asbestos on the site that we did dust control and monitoring. The dust control was clearly not perfect, but there were very few instances of visible dust like that. As far as the demolition of the structures, federal and California law require inspection and asbestos abatement prior to demolition of a structure. They do not cover the whole site. They cover specifically structures, okay? And the word "structure" is throughout, the, the regulation is 40 CFR 61 Sub Part M, the National Emissions Standards for Hazardous Air Pollutants for Asbestos. And the local air pollution control district, basically, their rule is just the federal rule. They don't have any additional requirements. Some forms of non-friable asbestos do not have to be removed prior to demolition. Non-friable asbestos that may become friable during demolition has to be removed, and friable asbestos normally has to be removed prior to demolition. And if there's, if the demolition involves more than 160 square feet of asbestos-containing materials, then the, the agency has to be notified. But it's all according to the structure, okay? So I didn't measure the sheds. I don't know how much square footage there is in the sheds. If, if that material is non-friable, and there's more than 160 square feet being demolished, a demolition notification has to be made regardless of whether there's asbestos or not, and the owner's required to have an asbestos inspection done, which includes testing the materials and determining whether they're friable. And the, the owner's been cited for not doing that. And I believe the, the contractor also.
In, in your opinion, did the vibration of the tanks that you observed have a possible connection with the friable material?
No. They wouldn't have affected that, that material. That material has probably deteriorated somewhat with weathering over the last 60 What those, the material that appeared to have been on the sheds and on the electrical transformer building that's there is a sheet steel, galvanized sheet steel, where asbestos is rolled into the hot galvanizing, it's embedded in the zinc, and then painted over. And normally, that material is pretty durable. It's non-friable when it's not abraded or broken down. But I didn't really look closely at the condition of those materials, but it starts out as non-friable material.
What do you do on, on days when we have one of our 50 mile an hour blows coming through here in terms of dust and, and lead detection at a site like this?
Well, we stopped work at about 20 miles an hour. We had, what, three or four days where we, we shut down because of wind a couple of times because we felt, it's in the, like a compliance plan and in the, in the dust control plan, it will shut down because it gets too hard to control the dust, and we didn't want to be in a situation where the, we couldn't control the, the lead paint on the tanks and so on.
It seemed even worse.
Yeah. We, we had an east wind surprisingly often. I had a weather station, and I moved, I had lead monitors, and in some cases asbestos monitors, downwind of wherever they were working, and I moved those around according to the wind direction.
So you did, you did accommodate the, the inspection plan according to the nature of the wind?
Yes. And, yeah, as far as emissions from those structures when they're just sitting there, yeah, there's asbestos on most of the roofs in town and in many of the buildings. Hypothetically, it could dislodge a fiber now and then, but you wouldn't be able to measure it typically. Likewise, the, the soil on the, on the hillside there and on the site and a lot of other areas is serpentine, contains naturally occurring asbestos, so.
And just to be clear, you weren't there monitoring, and you weren't part of the, the crew for the demolition? for the demolition of these pump houses?
Correct. Of the hose sheds. I was not notified that that was happening or going to happen. I wasn't asked to be there and, I don't know.
So, when, just for my own sense of observation, when this work was being done, you're there the whole time someone is in place doing the operation?
Yeah, in answer to your question, my last day was the 14th of December. At that point, we considered my scope of work completed and we didn't expect any more work to be done.
But if he's demolishing, you're there observing?
Correct.
Taking readings according to the way the permit was initially put out there? That's the nature of the permit?
Start to finish, yeah. Yeah, again, we had the demolition.
He thought the daisy was late. Wasn't very late.
I had a long drive. The demolition work plan included a plan for checking the pipes and tanks for vapors and residual liquids. It included the lead compliance plan, the dust control plan, the asbestos compliance plan, and so on. And I was monitoring all of that in accordance with those plans that were in the demolition work plan.
I guess this last question's more from my own curiosity. When we talked about this during the hearing for the permit, I was surprised about the shears versus the cutting. Do you still think the cutting would have been a more?
Well, cutting, cutting is what we did.
I mean, torch cutting?
Well, torch cutting, I vetoed the torch cutting. When they first came to me to help them develop the plan after it had been rejected and I discussed with Oliver what he planned to do, he said, "Oh, we're going to torch cut." I said, "No, you're not." Because you cannot put a torch on lead-based paint. It's the worst possible way to liberate. Instead of flakes of paint, you get fume off of it. So, if you'd been unable to puncture the tank with the shear to start cutting, we would have had to remove the paint from a section of the tank in order to cut a hole with the torch. We do not torch cut painted steel without removing the lead for typically 12 inches away from the torch cut.
That's all I have.
Susan?
I think my questions got answered. Thanks.
Jesse?
I just have one question that didn't get answered. So, Mr. Reese, Bedford demolition was not involved in the removal of the hose sheds? Is that what we're calling them?
The sheds, that's correct. But we did remove the fire hydrants, which were part of our original scope.
Okay. And so that would leave the owners as the sole responsible parties for that work being accomplished without the benefit of permit?
The owners and whoever removed it, yes.
Okay.
Joseph, you have anything else? Okay, and then, so you have, your reports have been given to the staff or yet?
I got more reports coming.
Okay. And then, lead contamination around the existing sites after the demolition, was there any appreciable increase in the soil concentrations or?
No, we did find low levels of lead before. We found low levels of lead afterwards. There was some lead, about 150 ppm, in the soil prior to the job from weathering of the paint. But I didn't find anything that would indicate that we'd have to do more cleanup.
So, you don't, you wouldn't, would you recommend excavation of the soil around where the tanks used to be or to mitigate that or not?
No. It's going to depend on the ultimate use of the site, and I haven't seen a plan for that. We haven't done a site assessment, health risk assessment. We've done the post-removal soil sampling, which was focused on the jet fuel contaminants. We did do some metals tests, but it's up in the air. I've not been directed at this point to do a complete site assessment.
Okay, and then on the naturally occurring asbestos in the serpentine rock, is it desirable? Can you tell the difference between the naturally occurring asbestos and the asbestos that could have been freed from the demolition of the sheds?
We can, and we did find visible debris that's recognizable as the material off the sheds. But if we were to test the soil for asbestos fibers, we wouldn't be able to tell if those fibers were natural or if they had come from some other source. Again, visually, we can see, oh, there's a flake of the material. But if it's not big enough to see that it is the manufactured material, then we wouldn't be able to tell that it's not natural.
And was the paint on the sheds, was that lead-based?
Yes.
Okay.
We took some soil samples around the sheds. We analyzed a piece of the paint and it contained lead, but taking soil samples in areas where there was no visible debris, those were negative for background levels.
Okay. Okay, great. All right, thank you. Any further questions for the speakers? Okay, we'll close, thanks a lot. Okay. We'll close public comment at this point and bring it back to the planning commission here. Guess it's time for comments and discussion. Who would like to? Jesse?
I'll start this off. I want to share my neighbor's outrage at either the carelessness or the apathy that was shown by the owners. I'm not going to blame contractors because they are firmly denying they were involved, but I do believe that somebody acted with careless disregard for public safety. I don't believe that any malfeasance by staff was occurred. I believe that director's discretion for amendment to the permit was subjective and I believe he acted in good faith. I do agree that there seemed to be some piecemealing going on with this project. As far as the EIR, I believe, although I think that ship may have sailed, I think it should have been required in the beginning, hindsight being 2020. And it, well, probably for me to say it was purposefully withheld from the scope of the original permit that they were going to remove those sheds, but it certainly, certainly appears that way to me. So, I don't disagree with the appearance issues and I don't know what sort of actionable, anything actionable we can actually do at this point that's useful, but I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Susan, who?
This, to me, is really kind of heartbreaking. We do live in an area that does have its own endemic hazards. So, we have this serpentine material that's part of our rocks, our soil. You know, I have a little bead store and, but I also used to work as an archaeologist. I worked with a lot of these kinds of materials. And one of the things that I'm telling people all day long is those stones you find on the beach, the little green ones, they're serpentine, don't polish them. Same goes for abalone. It's got asbestos fibers in it. It's dangerous for you. Use it, you know, if you're going to do anything with it, use respirator, it's underwater. I will also say, my father lived in, and my mother, but he spent time in the basement, lived in a house in New Jersey where there was natural radon occurring in the bedrock and he died of lung cancer. He was not a smoker. So, these kinds of, some of the hazards are not avoidable. You know, if the asbestos is in our soil and in our bedrock and the winds are blowing, you do what you can. When there are known structures on a property and if it's known that they are made with asbestos that's friable, that's disturbing to me. And again, as you say, that an owner would disregard that and not, I don't know what the plans are for this property, but not take it upon himself to take care of that first. I mean, wouldn't you do that if you were going to consider developing the property? Get rid of the poisons first. Notify people, do it properly. We can only assume, we hope, you know, that whoever collected those sheds did it in the appropriate way, but we had no monitor there. So, and I agree with Jesse, I don't know what we gain or lose with this permit. I feel like there's an actionable item to take to court, you know? We, as a city, apparently don't have the ability to fine in any reasonable way. You know, if it's a hundred dollar fine, if it's a $500 fine. How do you weigh that with health issues? So, what is our ultimate goal? How do we look at this property owner when they come forward again with, "Well, now we're ready to do something with this property"? I don't think they're going to be very well received, at least by this board or by me on this board. So, it's disturbing. I, you know, I think, I agree from the sounds of what I've heard, I guess one clarification I would like, my understanding is that our whole city is in the coastal, almost the whole city is in the coastal development permitting zone, and yet we do have these allowances for administrative permits. So, maybe that could be clarified.
So, we are in the coastal zone and the project conditions of approval included the clause that you've seen in all of the resolutions that grant staff authority to approve minor changes to permits. Otherwise, you know, somebody changes a window and you've got to bring that back. Usually, they're small things. This is, you know, like this project, a lot of concern about it, I understand it. It's one of the reasons we did the same noticing we did for the project. We noticed it to 1,000 feet, so everybody had an opportunity to weigh in. But stuff like this is normally dealt with through a building permit process, not through planning process. But it was because, and we thought, hey, while it is, these are small structures, it is attached to the project, and so we did a minor modification with that. We have, you've heard Michael Tiffany up here stating it, we have asbestos-containing material all over the city and lead paint all over the city and in its houses. And you have to have contractors that are certified in those types of demolition and removal when those things occur. And we oftentimes on commercial projects require the, what is it, NESHAP report related to emissions from, can't remember the name what that thing actually stands for, apologize. But we do require those when we find that there's likely of asbestos in those properties. As was indicated, that's the material that has to be taken care of first, but we're not the regulatory agency that's responsible for it. They end up having to go through the permitting process with kind of environmental health or APCD, so, yeah.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah. First, regardless of my planning commissioner position, you know, as a licensed architect, at least in the state of Maryland, I've got an ethical obligation to the public welfare. You know, I spend an hour in one of my classes talking to students about how materials have changed in the last century and we don't really even know what the ramifications of a lot of the things we're using are down the line. There's just not a record of it. And, you know, it's one thing to sit up here and talk about, "That's ugly, it's too big." You know, it's another thing to talk up here about somebody who had the obligation as the owner of the property to protect themselves and the public with hazardous materials. Those materials apparently are identified in a former report that they had control over. And, you know, staff, as someone who helps train the planners at Cal Poly, you guys have a lot of stuff to do. I remember one person in the planning department said, "Oh, you have to identify endangered species, you have to do this." No, 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 you don't have any of that expertise. We count on outside experts to do that. The thing that struck me during our testimony is even when we had two experts here, a monitor and a contractor who are bona fide in their areas, they disagree on a technique. We have no idea what happened with those sheds. The fact that somebody is a bona fide contractor means nothing to me when it comes to hazardous materials. So, I just can't believe someone would be this negligent on the part of the owner. And I have no sympathy for whatever happens in the civic record for whatever comes down the line. And I think there's a, so there's an aspect of the legalisms of doing work without a permit. Is the appeal the right way to get back at that? That's what I'm looking at my colleagues to help me understand. The thing is done at this point. The amount of work that's still left to be done, I think, would require a significant more amount of scrutiny in the future. I can't, I can't understand why we wouldn't use whatever mechanisms we have to put something punitive in place here. Because this is beyond, to me, an arbitrary thing. I changed the color of the paint from what you approved, you know? It seems to me that this was done without the checks and balances. We have a permit as a check and balance. We have a staff as a check and balance. We have observation as a check and balance. We have ownership using consultants as check and balance. And that fractured here. And it starts with the obligation of the owner to control their ownership, in my opinion. I tend to agree, I don't think staff has the expertise to go through every document that comes through here and understand it. I do wonder why if we understood some asbestos was there, it wasn't in the documentation to the community. That seems to be an issue that I would like some more discussion on. But I felt when, if my understanding is correct, one of the big things I argued about not needing an EIR was that the armed forces had done their own survey at the end when they put this up for sale and certified that many of the environmental constraints were taken care of and that they certified there wasn't certain materials. But apparently, they identified some of these things may have been there, if I'm not mistaken. So, I think ownership means ownership. The owner owns this, not staff. And I think staff did some subjective things that would be better if there was more documentation, but there is no question, something was done without a permit in violation of a permit, and I think that requires some punitive action.
Joseph?
Yeah, I'm going to go slowly here and refer to my notes periodically, which is something I don't typically do because of the complex nature of this. I'm really reassured that the allegations of the pounding and the dust were answered to my satisfaction as following appropriate procedures. I think it's worth noting that at the beginning of the hearing, I decided not to ask one question of the staff because I feared it would seem a little too ominous at the beginning. But the question was really, what was the array of punitive measures that were available should an applicant be found to have willingly and intentionally violated a permit? But I'll wait for a response. I want to go through some of these other things first. The issue of the nesting period, I think, was answered to my satisfaction, particularly in view of the need to remove some of these hazardous materials. I personally was satisfied with the survey that there was no nesting going on despite the fact that it might have been in the nesting period. The issue of the fire hydrants, I think, was answered to my satisfaction as just being a reasonable interpretation of the original permit. With respect to the notice that the amended permit had been stopped by the appeal, strikes me as questionable. And in view of the history of the applicant over these several years, suspicious, particularly in view of the fact that the work was done, the work meaning the removal of the sheds, was done without any sort of pre-meeting that apparently was required or any kind of a third-party agent overseeing the work. And I question the wisdom of the applicant deciding to do it that way. It does not strike me as a simple, honest error. I recall, with respect to the issue of segmentation, I recall a really robust discussion of that. I recall, with respect to the issue of segmentation, I recall a really robust discussion of that, and what persuaded me that this was not an example of illegal segmentation was that there was not any suggestion of what a development plan would be going forward, it was simply getting rid of hazardous materials, and so I was in agreement that we didn't need an elaborate environmental study for that. However, clearly, my thinking, or I believe the thinking of the commissioners who were on the board at the time, was and is that we would at least address the removal of hazardous materials as one entity, and that we certainly wouldn't want that segmented. And I, for one, believe that, had I been, you know, apprised that there were hazardous materials in that shed, I would have raised the question of, well, I realize in the original permit that you are not wanting to remove the sheds, but nevertheless, there is hazardous material there as well as in the tank, and that it should be treated as one activity. And I'm aware that there was much discussion about what might be under the tank, but we couldn't really resolve those issues until the tank was removed. So, clearly, I think my understanding, maybe erroneously, was that in this period of demolition, we would remove the apparent hazards and the readily and easily discoverable hazards and treat them as one entity, and clearly, that was done here. So, now that brings us to the commonsensical question of what to do about the remaining sheds and the sort of other treatment of the apparent and readily discoverable hazards. And I think without question, before any more work is done on the project, the remaining asbestos sheds should be addressed in the appropriate way, which is with a pre-meeting and with an agent, a third-party agent, and all the appropriate measures taken to remove And then, after that's done, there is some sort of an ultimate examination of the property and a sign-off, again, that all apparent or readily discoverable hazardous situations have been removed. And then, finally, I will say this, there is a suspicion, created on my part, admittedly not a conclusion, but a suspicion, that when I think of the mysterious disappearance of the goats, I think of the erroneous chopping down of the trees, I believe there might have been, I'm not positive of this, but I believe there might have been some intrusions into the escher from time to time that were erroneous, the erroneous removal of the fire hydrants, the unfortunately timed removal of the sheds, there is a suspicion that the applicant follows a philosophy that I can only describe as, better to ask for forgiveness than permission. Again, that suspicion, if found to be true, would be highly disrespectful to the development office and equally disrespectful to this commission, and I might add, I would regard that as personally insulting. So, I would hope that this commission would decide that there can be no more, in quotes, erroneous mistakes in the short term or the midterm, and that if such erroneous mistakes do occur in the short term or the midterm, that we'd be prepared to take some serious punitive measures against the applicant, and I'm certain those punitive measures would greatly disadvantage the applicant. Those are my comments.
Okay. Well, I think the tone is pretty well set, and I agree with it. Once again, I think there's just been some, we saw this project come before us, and we deliberated on it for hours and hours. We tried to set up a system of checks and balances where we had third-party monitoring, we had certified contractors involved, we had site condition surveys prior to the construction starting, we set up conditions for site surveys after the construction was completed, we've had daily continuous monitoring of noise, dust, and fumes. To the best of our ability, we tried to make this project as safe for the community as we physically could. And, you know, like you, Joseph, I'm, this appears to me to be a clear indication that the owner went beyond and around the conditions that we set to foolishly remove sheds that were clearly marked as not to be removed. And, you know, look back on my plans, and the items that were not to be removed were clearly marked as these structures are to remain. So, we did not condition the project for that. So, quite frankly, I feel we got jacked around, and that's, that falls back on the applicant. Now, the question is remedies. What, you know, I agree with the appellate's in some of their points, but I'm not sure what we can do. You know, our hundred dollar fine is, you know, is laughable at best, you know? So, just issuing another minor permit, you know, exemption to say that what he did was okay, we have no way to really say that, you know? So...
May I add something?
Let's, yeah, so, I'm kind of stymied here, too.
Well, in hearing everybody, I want to make sure we were all in the same kind of mindset, but we're an advisory body, so any ultimate decision would be at the city council level.
Well, no, unless, you know, whatever decision comes out of this body today, you know, the public's unhappy with, they can appeal that decision to city council.
So, hypothetically, if we denied the appeal, they would be able to appeal to the city council?
Yes.
So, in thinking that through, I'm wondering if, because pulling the appeal suspends the permit, or however, whatever it does to the permit...
Let me, let me jump in on this.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, no, no. See, I think you're kind of on the same vein I'm thinking of. If we, so Scott, you know, school us here, you know, we're looking to you for a little bit of guidance here. So, if we approve the sections of the appeal, can we require a new permit for, to remediate the work that was done outside of the original permit, to make sure that those, that that work and any future work is done under the conditions that were approved in the first permit?
Can I chime in?
Yeah, okay.
We've already started to do some, what we call after-the-fact permit conditions, because the work's been done, so there's...
Right. But there's still more structures on the site that may, you know, on a Friday night disappear.
But I think that gets into a new situation. The subject of this permit was those three sheds and the fire hydrants, and I think the big concern is the removal of the three sheds, how it was done, what they've left on the site, if anything, and so we have ordered soil testing, as Michael said, visual inspections and soil testing. We had ordered them to have the biologist out after the work was completed to verify the condition of the esch, to confirm that if there were nesting birds in the site, that they appeared to be undisturbed and continuing about their business. I think if you can think of other after-the-fact permit requirements, I think that's at least all I could think of, to come back at the owner and make sure that the site is clean.
Well, Nancy, what, okay, if I was going to develop this site as a developer, you're not going to be wanting to have a CMU building with asbestos in it, you're not going to be wanting to have another shed that has, you know, the corrugated metal is coated with asbestos on the site before you come through with residential development plans on the site. So, what, you know, where I would go is a complete stripping of the site of all structures to be done in an environmentally sensitive and applicable way that's tied back to the original permit.
One thing I'd like to suggest is the consideration of a bond, that we amend the original permit to ask for a substantial bond.
The bond exists.
Well, maybe raise the, raise the, how high it is, because I cannot imagine, we just heard, we still have lots of reports pending, we have actions being taken with other bodies. The permit can't be closed out till those things are concluded, right?
It's not, it's not. We're still going through that process. Including the additional items that Nancy mentioned as it relates to the permit, we attempted to issue for this, that they went for without before it was issued, are effective.
What I was going to say was, so, it seems to me that the city council has enormous discretion in amending fee structures and things of that nature, and fine structures, and they have the ultimate authority to do that. I'm wondering if we have the ability to amend a, or have the owner somehow obligate himself to a significant fine in the event of any future...
We can only implement, you know, the fine structure that's in our municipal code, and literally, it requires us to issue a warning and then give them corrective action, and then, the corrective action in this instance is to, you know, come through and get a minor modification permit, and then, if they don't do any of those things, then we can start fining them. It starts off at a hundred dollars, and two hundred dollars, and five hundred dollars, or whatever, you know, after that. So, it's not much of a deterrent, but what we've done is, as it relates to going through and now trying to clean up after the applicant moving forward without having effective permits in place, is, he's now producing thousands of dollars' worth of reports that he wasn't otherwise going to have to done if he had, he just went through with the permits. So, I mean, while not specifically punitive, it is additional, you know, funds he's expending now, because now we're having after-the-fact review of the site based on the work that he's done.
Scott, I see that, but what I'm concerned about is what he's going to do next. And so, you know, if we could condition this, you know, the exist, the amendment to include all existing structures on the site that have, that should be remediated, so that they fall in, before he could get the site signed off, to do, to come back for a residential lot line, you know, adjustment, or to basically subdivide the site for residential development, he would have to complete this permit.
I don't think we have any ability to compel him to do that.
So, okay.
I was going to suggest, just for the sake of sort of winding our way through this, that we look at the specific provisions of the appeal, which seem to be numbered one through seven, maybe we can go through those and agree, decide which of these provisions we agree on and which we don't. That might lend some order to what we're trying to decide.
That's not the appeal, that's not the appeal of the staff. That's not the appeal, it's the action items that are being requested, that's not the body, the grounds of your appeal.
I realize it's not the grounds of your appeal, but I'm asking, what are you seeking? Aren't you seeking...
As I understood it, she wanted us to deny the permit amendment and request the EIR after the fact. That's kind of basically what I took out of all of that.
Oh.
What happens if we deny the permit amendment? What would happen next?
You would need, if you, say that again, I'm sorry.
So, if we deny the amendment to the permit, so the applicants are asking...
If you uphold the appeal, you would have to, so if you uphold the appeal, you have to give some direction to us as to what you want us to do.
Okay. And our direction couldn't be, we require them to remove the remaining structures?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Down the scope.
Well, couldn't we require them to make those structures safe in their existing form, so that they are either encapsulated, so that they're, you know, any asbestos or lead is mitigated by encapsulation on the structures?
It's not part of the scope of the permit that's in front of you, that's the problem. So, you can't make decisions related to, you know, to some other component of this, it's not part of the project, it wasn't part of the original project, and it's not part of the minor mod that we worked on.
But see, this is, Scott, this is where we're getting in this conundrum. Those sheds that were removed weren't part of the project, they weren't part of the original permit, but yet they were removed without the appropriate...
Correct, but it doesn't give you carte blanche to go in there and make the project something that it's not. I had a long, more than one, couple different conversations with the city attorney's office about where we're at, and he's like, you really have little you can do here, you know, because you're limited in scope as to what you can review, and you can, we can take it through the process, and...
I guess where I'm getting lost in this is, I can't believe the city council wouldn't have discretion to fine them in some other way other than what's currently prescribed. I mean, issue a warning, and, well, so if we issued an official warning with some sort of a, I don't know, resolution is the right word, but some sort of official, we didn't like you doing that, and in the next, if, hopefully, there's not a next, if there is a next, then I can't believe we don't have the discretion to say, if there is a next, then it's going to be a significant ten thousand dollar, fifteen thousand dollar fine. I can't believe we don't have that authority.
It'd be nice if we did, but we don't. We can only enforce the things that are in our codes and policies and the adopted fee structures that we have. If we don't have it in any of those documents, you can't just make it up.
No, but Scott, we actually have a report that says there's friable asbestos in these structures, that these are hazardous condition presently. So, why can't we condition this amendment to encapsulate and to make those structures safe at this point through this process right now? Because we didn't have that information before, when the permit was issued, and when we put conditions on the permit, if we would have known that there was friable asbestos in those existing structures, I would have conditioned them to be encapsulated or to be protected so that they wouldn't, they wouldn't get more asbestos into the environment.
If you want to continue your decision, I can go look and do it some more.
Let me open it up for public comment, I think we've got an expert here on, Michael, you want to step forward and...
I think some of them have something to say also, but, to my knowledge, there isn't a statute at the state or federal level that speaks to asbestos in place on a building, with the exception of AHERA, which applies to schools and public buildings, where asbestos is required to be managed if it's in a hazardous condition. Potentially, you could get billion safety or APCD to issue an order to abate. My feeling is, I doubt that they would do that. If you have, again, a situation where you've got something you can withhold and set your own conditions on, perhaps that would work, but to my knowledge, there's nothing you can point it to statutorily that says a person can't have a building in that condition on their property.
Even though it's in a, there's been almost, you know, I would say, you know, almost criminal malfeasance in not bringing forth a report that was known that these buildings were in hazardous condition, and we had a project... and we had a project under review.
Well, not in statute. I mean, you, you wish that they would have disclosed that, and, but again, I don't know. If you didn't have a project going on this site, okay, broad information came to you that there was this building in this condition. They were talking, I think primarily about the garage building with the, with the sheeting on it. I'm not sure that there's anything an enforcer could do about a person having a building in that condition on their site unless visible emissions were crossing the property line. There is a visual emission standard in NESHAPS, but that means you have to see asbestos dust fly through the air.
The photos and my observation was you're having, you're having corrosion in the internal core that those panels and, and the coatings are actually flaking off on site. So if it was, if it was an exist, if it was an external building that was not, there was not being work on, it wasn't in a, in a site that had a, had a project being worked and being permitted on, then yes, I understand that. But we are in a condition where we have permits and we've got conditions that we have set on the site. And they have, to my, to my opinion, they have negligently withheld information that should have been brought forward to the original permitting, through the original permitting process.
I'm not gonna disagree with you, but that I think is the only hammer you have, is that you're in a, you have some authority over them because of the permit. I just wanted to state that absent that, if this building was observed on a property that wasn't under your purview, for this APCD can't go in and say you have to fix that building unless there's visible emissions.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question here? So what recourse does a jurisdiction, or even a private entity at that, for that matter, have over, I don't want to say criminally negligent, but negligent work in asbestos? So there has to be some sort of licensing board or some sort of-
Well, APCD has cited the owner, and I believe the contractor, for failing to notify and I think failing to, to do the survey that's required prior to demolition. APCD is the one that enforces the NESHAP regulation and-
So there's no professional licensing board that regulates them that we could somehow complain to?
Well, the contractor, I don't know if they can point to anything that the contractor did wrong other than perhaps failing to notify. It's the owner's responsibility to notify, but the contractor normally notifies for the owner.
Well, the contractor didn't have a valid permit.
Right. The contractor didn't notify, it's not a permit. Now, if they required a building permit-
It was demolition.
If they required a demolition permit from the city, that's another thing that they may have, that, that would be for building department to determine whether-
The terms in the condition of the, of the demolition of the tanks required a demolition permit for structures. Those, those sheds were structures and the, and the, and the, the permit hadn't been satisfied. So, so that should have been amended to a demolition permit, and there should have been notification of the hazardous condition.
So perhaps Building and Safety can cite them for-
Well, that's, we've kind of gone down that road. I guess my question was, I've heard there's a state regulatory agency and a federal regulatory agency that oversees asbestos removal, and it very clearly seems as if a contractor was negligent in that, in their responsibility. So I'm wondering what agency might we have cause to contact?
APCD. APCD is a delegated authority for the federal NESHAPS. Federal EPA basically doesn't do anything in California. It's all delegated to the state. And the APCD is a state agency. It's part of the California Resources Board, and they have the responsibility for asbestos regulation. Again, they, they cover the, the notification requirement. They can cite for that. Environmental Health is the delegated authority for waste disposal. So if they found that the material was friable, which would be hazardous waste, and it was disposed of as non-hazardous waste, they could sanction the owner. The owner's the generator of the waste, so the owner would be responsible for having dumped hazardous waste in the, in a non-hazardous landfill. If, then they probably have to go dig it up and determine directly that it was non-friable waste. But that, I've seen that done. Then the, the contractor has a license from the state contractor's license board, and he has a registration from Division of Occupational Safety and Health, from, from CalOSHA. Those can be sanctioned if the contractor violated OSHA procedures or CSLB procedures. Okay? And those, if the contractor was, was cited for improper disposal of hazardous waste, for instance, then DOSH might pull their registration. If the, if the contractor does something that endangers his workers, then DOSH would definitely have something to say about that. So, yeah, DOSH and, and license board are the contractor. APCD and Environmental Health are against the owner, basically.
Okay, Mike, I'll tell you-
Thank you very much. Do we have one of the appellants come forward?
Yeah. I think it's really a lot, Cynthia Hawley-
Could you pull the microphone to you a little bit more? There you go.
Cynthia Hawley. It's very much simpler than all of that. It really is very, very simple. With an appeal, if you find one ground that supports the appeal, the appeal should be granted. And if you grant the appeal, the permit is denied, period. And then this, then the applicant has to get his act together because there's no more permit. He has to start over again, and you start with a clean slate. And it's very simple. That way you don't have to worry about any of this stuff. You start with a clean slate. The applicant knows you mean business, and he's got to come back and, and clean up his act and start over.
Okay. And when you refer to the permit, you're referring to the administrative permit?
Yes, the, the permit that we are appealing, the administrative permit amendment, that's what we're appealing.
I see, I see that.
Yeah, if you, if you grant the appeal, then that permit is denied.
So if I'm correct, what you're, what you're seeking are the four provisions on page two of the, of this file, this report that we have. You want to rescind the administrative permit.
Yes.
You want to encase all the corrugated asbestos structures on the site. You want to amend the application, eliminate the three fire hydrants, and you want to hold the applicant accountable for all the permit violations, which are admittedly insignificant. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the only thing that remains now is to, if you find that there's, there's grounds to uphold the appeal, which I believe there are, I wouldn't have been involved in this, then, then the permit is, the application is, the permit is rescinded.
Right.
That's it.
I guess the question I'm asking, or the point I'm making is, your requests are reasonably simple, and they're in accordance with what our opinion is, but that doesn't really address the continuing conduct going forward of the applicant. That's the problem we're having.
Yeah, it does, because the applicant no longer has any, any paper in his hands. He's got no permit to do anything on the property.
He still has the original permit.
We could suspend that also.
Yeah, he has the original permit.
The original permit is done, because the original permit was only for the pipes and the tanks. That was it.
It's not done.
It hasn't been closed out.
Well, it can be closed out, because the pipes and the tanks are gone. But that's what I'm saying. The original permit does not extend to anything left on that site.
Well, that, that hasn't been determined yet. That's, that's the issue we're dealing with.
Oh, well, it is just the pipes and the tanks. I mean, that, that permit doesn't say, this is a permit for taking down any of those other buildings. Like, that's why this is happening.
I understand.
It's an amendment to the permit, to allow something new.
Okay, Cynthia, let me posit this. So if we, if we accept your appeal and uphold your appeal, we deny them, the, the permit modification. Essentially, we're allowing the original permit to go back into effect with, without any new conditions. So we're essentially, then we're essentially saying that those removals of the sheds and everything didn't happen, and we're okay with that. Because his original permit would be in effect, and he could close out that original permit and then sell, sell the site for future development without, without addressing the, the actions that he took.
Or, or, or submit a request for an additional amendment to the original-
Right.
-permit to do something else.
Yeah.
Well, I see that there's, there's three things we're talking about here. What you're calling the original permit, which is the permit for demolition.
Yes.
Moving forward with this and trying to figure out how to, how to fine him or something. And so, so the thing is that, that I think that there's no reason, I mean, if their staff, this is, this permit needs to be closed. There's nothing more in this permit that, that has, that can be done. If you deny this permit, if, if the applicant wants to do anything else on that property, he's gonna have to come back, just like he did to try to get a permit to amend that permit, if that permit is still there, which I don't think it should be, because it's-
Yeah.
It's closed out, but-
Essentially just, okay. Thank you very much. I think we got, we got the gist of what, of what you're trying to do. And I think we need a little more clarification from our, from our, from our city attorney.
You can fine the guy in addition to rescinding the permit.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. We had, we had one-
You opened it to public comment.
Okay.
You know, what we're asking is not impossible to do. We know that this particular situation's been dicey. Rescind the, what we had asked for and, and now put a condition of an EIR on any other further work that has to be done on this property to protect future. Whether he sells the property or not, before he can do that, an EIR has to be disseminated. Very simple.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll close public comment at this point. I'm, I'm sorry, I just opened it up for the appellate and the applicant.
I just want to know when the trucks came by uncovered, what was in them? Could have been toxic. I have a little nephew. I'll take care of what days were there so I can correlate if he was there or not, if he needs to do anything else with that. He is gonna have health issues.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, closing public comment. Bring it back. So I, I think we've kind of hit a, hit a wall here. Scott, could-
So it's, so you can either give me direction to go look into whatever it is you'd like me to do. You could, you could uphold the appeal and just put the statement, you don't have to do any of the things that they're requesting. You can simply uphold the appeal, rescind the permit, and say this is, requires a major modification, bring it back to planning commission. You don't, meaning you don't find the process that we went through to be minor, it should be major. And then we'd have to start the whole process over, and it would be an amendment to the original permit. That's how we do these things. And that could take place. I'd probably want a little more direction for you, from you, as to what you want me to see to bring back when I bring that to you. Because we're sitting here talking about it now. It's the same process. We notice the same people, so. And again, and then, and the work's been done. You can go through the process and just give us direction. You know, we can look at this, we can have, you know, reports done, re-verify all the structures on site, you know, to see what the status of them are, if you'd like. We can do that. We could do the item, bring the item back. It doesn't give resolution to the, to the appellants, and they might actually appeal that decision, because it might take a while. So that might not be, you know, satisfactory to the appellants, so.
I have a question. So we have conditions of approval, and they didn't abide by the conditions. Doesn't that necessarily give us the right to rescind our approval?
So the project is, we're working through trying to finalize it. They came in to get permits to do what they did. They just were ineffective when they did it. And that's the minor mod. That's the thing that's on appeal before you today. The other project is not on appeal before you today. And we're working on the closeout of that, of those permits as we speak. And at some point, they'll have given us all of the information, and we'll be eventually, with any luck, be able to close the project out. So.
Okay, I hope I can not add to the confusion, okay. At the very least, the amended permit should be rescinded because some of the work was not, well, some of the work was done without the necessary pre-study and third agent. And because the issue of whether they had noticed that the permit was stopped by the email is a little bit dicey. But I think for those very reasons, the amended permit should be rescinded. And, and I, again, I am convinced that the commission at the time, had they known about, or had they known in a, in a detailed fashion, whether, whether we knew it at all, about the asbestos on the site, would have regarded the demolition as to be done in totality. We would not have actually permitted the asbestos-containing sheds to remain untouched while some other parts of the demolition were going on. At the very least, we should require irrespective of what the applicant wants, that these sheds be moved, removed safely, once and for all, and to be done. I do not believe that the sheds should remain on the property. For one reason, there is no conceivable development plan that would conform, development plan for the property that would conform with these sheds being on the property. So they have to be removed, and I think care for the community and common sense requires that they be removed sooner rather than later. And that's in conformity with one of the things that the appellant is seeking in their request. All the other things are largely formality. Amend, amend, rather, rescind the administrative permit, of course. Encase the corrugated asbestos structure on site. Well, I would say carry that step forward and remove it from the site. Amend the application to eliminate the three fire hydrants. Well, sure, we can amend the, the application, but they're already gone. Hold the applicant accountable for all permit violations, of course. But the punitive measures associated with the permit violations, in this case, are inadequate. And so we should devise, if not, we, we don't have the authority to devise additional punitive measures for the violations. But we can certainly underscore that should future violations occur, we will make a recommendation to the city council, let something be done about it. Those are my thoughts.
Make one more attempt at this. I don't understand when someone is not performing, executing things that they've entered into an agreement with us. That's, that's a performance type of thing. Why can't we modify the original permit to require a performance bond that has a dollar value that says until every one of those reports is in, every one of these reports on the permit that we've asked for is in, they forfeit the bond until those things are done?
But we have the bond.
Can we make it larger?
There's no, there's no need to.
Well, there's a need to, because he'd have to put money into a bondsman to post that bond.
And again, the, the application, the things that you're referring to today are not the original permit. It's off limits. Can't do anything with that.
But we found he's not able to contain his agreements that he enters into with us.
I, I understand what you want to do. It's just, we don't have the mechanism to do that. That's not, the permits that are in front of you. You can't act on permits that aren't in front of you.
Well, that's why I'm saying, can't we put something in there while we still have ones that are open, saying you have lacked performance on the, on the permits that we have already given you? Therefore, we're gonna require a higher bond until you execute everything to the letter of the law.
And we're still working through that, and we have a bond that's sufficient to deal with that.
So we can't, we can't condition the existing permit so we could- So we can't, we can't condition the existing permit so we could find him in violation of not having a permit to do the removal, the demolition of those other structures?
So I don't understand, Scott, excuse me, but I don't understand why we can't condition the amended, the amended permit to, to mitigate a safety hazard that exists on site that we've just become aware of.
Like I said, if you want to continue it, I'll go look into it and we'll see what the status of the existing facilities are, but here's the problem. I don't know that the city wants to get into that business necessarily unless there's a real health hazard. Okay? Because as I mentioned before, and as Mr. Tiffany mentioned to you, there is asbestos and lead paint all over the city. So we don't go into every building to check like, oh, sorry, you, you can't use your building anymore because it has asbestos in it. That's not what we do.
But Scott, excuse me, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we didn't have somebody in here that had that, you know, that garage that has asbestos shingles on it. We didn't have them in here in the middle of a permit that was to, to do a bathroom remodel in that, in the house, all of a sudden come in in the middle of the night or over the weekend and tear down that, that garage and drag it through, drag it through the street. So that's the difference here. We had an existing permit that they could have come in beforehand to do the amendments appropriately, but they took, they did this pretty much in the dead of night and created a public hazard doing so. That we, or may have created a public hazard because we couldn't certify that they did. So that's what I'm saying. If, if that contract, if that permit was in effect, we could stop, stop order on the permit. We could not issue a certificate, certificate of occupancy. We could make that, we could make that house uninhabitable till they remedied the situation. Where, so I don't see why we can't do that here. I don't see why we can't at least put conditions on the amended permit that he's coming forward with, that, a condition that states that the existing structures either need to be removed environmentally, in an environmentally sensitive way, or encapsulated to the, in such a way that they're no longer a hazard to the community. Because we're amending, we're amending the, the permit already.
I think the issue is still, we need to determine what those structures are.
Okay. I'm fine, I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
I mean, so like I said, if you, if you, and you have a couple of options, I just, you just need to choose where you want to go with it.
I think we definitely need to continue.
Okay. Excuse me.
Am I correct in thinking that sometime in the near future, there's going to have to be another environmental examination, if not an impact statement, about what lies under the tank that was removed?
It's part of the follow-up studies they're required to do.
Before this current permit is written off or sometime, or sometime beyond that?
Correct.
Current, current permit.
Okay. And then at such time as we're presented with a detailed development plan, there will be something, either a full-scale environmental impact, impact plan required or something, but there will still have to be another study.
So any number of things could come out of the follow-up studies.
Right.
And it just depends on, and they could be required to do cleanup work on the site before it's closed out, at which point we're not going to close out our permit until that cleanup work is done because it's part of the project.
Right.
Um, it just, they had to wait to remove the tanks to test what was underneath it.
So my point being that this is only, uh, chapter two or three in perhaps a, you know, six or 10 or 12 chapters story.
Okay, guys, let's, uh, let's kind of reach a conclusion. I, I'm thinking that we're heading towards a continuance with the direction to, you know, you tell me.
Well, I, I think we should grant the, grant the appeal. Based on what they're asking, I, I, I'm hard pressed to say what our opposition is to granting the appeal.
I would like to, I would like to agree, I just, I'm wondering about the unintended consequences.
Well, that, and that was my point for the last question. The, we, we will have ample opportunities to address what our opinion has been of the applicant's behavior to date.
No, we won't because it will not come back before us to, to certify the permit. It'll be done at the staff level.
No, I do not mean the specific examples, but I mean whether he demonstrated good faith or bad faith. And that certainly characterizes our decision-making with respect to future requests.
I respectfully disagree because as soon as the first permit is closed out.
And what is Scott on?
Oh, I'm. I'm sorry, I apologize for that. So as soon as the first permit is closed out, they could sell the property without, legally unencumbered.
Right.
So, so.
And, and to that, to that I would respond, if they sold the property, that property would no longer be associated with the current applicant who has demonstrated certain things that we stand in opposition to.
If, if a, if a person, company contractor, owner, whoever, tanks aside, demolished three pump houses that were full of asbestos without a permit, there would be a code enforcement action.
Yeah, but it would likely, sorry, it would likely, we would be going through air pollution control district, county environmental health for those types of things. They're the regulatory agencies that oversee them, so ultimately we'd be talking to them and saying, hey, this happened, and they'd be going through this. If it, if it was such, if the development, you know, demolition is considered development under the coastal act, so depending on what the level of that was, um, then it might trigger a coastal development permit, which they'd have to get an after-the-fact permit, you know, for, which is what we'd be doing now. If you, if you denied, if you uphold the appeal, then the permit goes away. And they'll have to come back and get a coastal development permit for all the demolition work that was done without the permit.
Then we could condition it however we want.
It's not carte blanche, it's, you get to condition related to the project that's in front of you.
We have, we have broad discretion over our condition abilities. We have to rephrase.
But see, most of the work's already been done on the tanks and stuff, so all the tanks would, would, wouldn't be in, in the new permit.
But possibly we could condition it to remove the other buildings.
The other thing isn't going to be opened up by the, by the modification.
It's not a modification anymore, it's a new permit.
They could request a brand-new, well, it depends on what they do. They could request a, just a permit for just that, a separate coastal development permit, or they could request a modification of the original permit, which is what they did with us. Modifications can be minor or major. Major goes back to planning commission, minor goes, is at staff level.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I do not want a future scenario to occur in which, uh, the, the appeal is not granted and the applicant sometime in the future decides that he'd like to remove those additional sheds and we see a repetition of this same behavior. There's nothing, absolutely nothing to prevent that. And I think at the very least, that's what we have to prevent today.
Well, that's what I was trying to get to on, you know, by, by doing a continuance so that we can, with direction, to have those sheds either removed or encapsulated or modified to the point that they're no longer a hazard to the community.
And that's what the appellant is requesting.
So if we, so the mechanism, if we uphold the appeal, require a major modification, they would have to come before this board again and we would have some discretion. Let's say discretion. Right?
But I'm not sure why they would come.
Because it's a major modification.
But they did the work.
They'll still need a permit. They still the development, they're still required to get a coastal development permit. So regardless of what happens, they have to have a permit for what they did. So it'll either be a modification of the existing permit, or it'll be a, a separate standalone coastal development permit for the sheds.
Which would give us slightly more discretion than we have now.
Probably not a lot, but some, yes.
Something's better than nothing.
So if we go down that road, I would want direction as to what are the things you want to see us bring back when we bring back the permit to planning commission?
I would want to see all the relevant reports. I, I mean, I would want to see, I mean, as you said, he's probably doing thousands of dollars right now in sort of backfilling his reports.
He's doing, he's doing all the reports he was required to do as part of the original permit, plus the additional reports he's required to do for doing the work without permits.
Right.
Yep.
I would like a formal explanation on how this occurred from, from the owner and the contractor.
But again, that's really, I mean, so would I. But that's, we aren't a judicial body, you know, we can't.
We can ask for an explanation on how, how the work without permits occurred and maybe they would be a little remiss to repeat if we had something, I mean, I'm not saying we can slap them on the wrist in any way, but at least make them explain their actions.
Does, does the, I'm looking at the first point of the requested appeals action, immediately rescind the administrative permit. That suggests, if we were to grant that, that suggests that the administrative office, that the community development office should not have granted the amended appeal, does it not?
Which is completely within your authority on appealing.
No, no, but I'm, that, that's the clear and simple meaning of those words. And I would like not to suggest, I would not, I would not want to suggest that the development office was incorrect in granting the administrative appeal. The problem is.
I agree.
The problem is that the administrative, the administrative permit was not properly observed, they didn't have a pre-meeting, they didn't have a third-party agent, and after, after the appeal was made to stop that permit, they went ahead and did the work, whether they had noticed with it or not. So I would say, I would delete provision one from the appeal. I, I would not agree with that, but again, repeating what I've said now so many times, we should remove, we should remove that, all those structures from the property now or as soon as possible, irrespective of the wishes of the applicant. If, uh, yes.
See, Joseph, I don't, you know.
So if, if you're going to uphold the appeal, let's start with that. Do you want to do that? Because if you do, then let's say why we're doing it, because we'll have to bring back a resolution with findings on it that, that support that. Okay? Anything else that you want to do? I want the sheds removed, whatever. I mean, you just need to give me direction so we can talk to the applicant about it. They may or may, they may or may not want to choose to put that in there, but that doesn't have anything to do with upholding the appeal, it just gets rid of the permit processes in front of you. You can't mandate anything happen beyond the fact that they need to bring the application back to you at a planning commission level.
I would say.
With direction, I mean, that's where I want to get the direction. You're interested in this, I will certainly convey that, you know, as you put it forward, that's, this is what the commission's interested in, in your future application, they'd like it to include these things. Whether they'll do that or not, I, I have no idea.
So, so Scott, excuse me, Michael, so if we uphold the appeal, let me try to get this straight, and give you a direction that we want to have the existing asbestos on, on site in those structures mitigated, they would have to come back with a modification of their, of the original permit?
They can, so a lot of times we, we do it with a modification, they could also come back with just a standalone CDP for that work. It's, you know, I mean, it could be either one. So do you, so do you want to amend it? It's cheaper to amend it, um, you know, versus full-blown CDP, but they might not want to do that, I don't know.
And would that be considered a major modification that would have to come before the planning commission?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're saying, hey, you went through the minor mod process, given the way, the way they acted on this, we don't think that's appropriate, we want a full, full hearing on this, it shouldn't be minor modification, it should either be major modification or standalone CDP. Um, we'll work with the applicant on figuring out what that looks like, with whatever direction you give us, and we'll convey that, you know, the desire of the planning commission as to what you want to see us bring back, and that'll be part of the process. And we'll give you explanation as to their willingness or lack thereof to, you know, to bring forward the information that you request.
Okay, that's, that's kind of where I'm heading for.
I like that, and if I can answer Scott's question, so I mean, I, I don't know if this is actually politically correct or not, but I mean, quite frankly, the reason why I think we should do this is because I don't think we should reward bad behavior from the applicant.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Let me add, you know, we, we have really dismissed the notion of segmentation in the development process in this case, and I won't go into the details of that, but nevertheless, the prohibitions against segmentation are real and, you know, an imaginative lawyer could argue that segment, segment, segmentation has existed with respect to the demolition activities. So, um, I, 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 there's a limitation, I think, to the discretion that the applicant has in what hazardous things he can get rid of in one group or another when the parcel is taken as a whole, so.
I would imagine, you know, I mean, for the most part, all of the, I mean, because this project has a lot of conditions and mitigation measures on it, all of them probably cover the remaining removal. I mean, there's not additional impacts that happen from this. It's the same stuff because the stuff we knew to exist on site before, so there's mitigation measures to address them. There's mitigation measures to address asbestos. I mean, you heard Michael Tiffany stand up and there's a whole plan that goes along with it specifically to those items.
But they didn't do them.
But my, let me finish, but my, notwithstanding Michael Tiffany's, you know, testimony, there, there has to be a commonplace, a commonsensical, rational way of the order in which various hazardous materials are removed. And, and, and I, and I cannot believe that the commonsensical approach would be you let the structure, the old structure that's deteriorated by nature and by abuse, remain while you pound away at a nearby structure and have all the, the, all the unattended activities and sometimes mistakes in the chaos of a construction situation take place. I mean, logically, and had this come before us before, logically, we would have all said, no, I tell you what, before you start pounding on that tank, let's get rid of some of those hazardous, hazardous sheds so that there are no possible mistakes with respect to that, and then we'll go ahead and concentrate on the big stuff.
But they restated that they were going to remain.
Yeah, I know. But, and my point is, had, had we, had we been alerted to the fact that those were hazardous in themselves, I for one would have said, no, I think not. I don't think we'll allow you to do it that way. I think we'll insist that we remove those things first and then proceed.
Okay. Michael, you've been trying to get a word in.
I love bonds. I just want to ask the question, if this was a modification to the original permit as a minor change, because they haven't executed the terms within the larger permit about asbestos, or about asbestos removal, haven't they voided the bond on asbestos? I would like our city attorney to investigate that because my impression would be they have no way to tell us in any verifiable way that they've accommodated the asbestos mitigation of the amended permit.
And also on that, the, the bond of the contractor who did the work without, I hate to do that to the contractor, but.
I'm sorry, but a contractor should know when they're dealing with hazardous materials and they do not have a permanent hand.
Right.
That, on a site next to a residential neighborhood, we're not talking about somewhere out in the middle of San Luis Obispo County. And, and I would like us.
You can't, you can't just pull the bond, okay? You have to pull the bond to do the work. So if there's work that needs to be done and they're not doing it, then we pull the bond to do the work. That's the only way you can diswork.
No, they actually.
It goes in our pocket, that's, that's not how it works.
Scott, the, the, the contractor has a certainty bond with the state for his license. So that bond is in jeopardy at this point because he did unpermitted work.
I'm still not sure that that addresses the issue that.
I agree with what Scott's saying. I mean, we would have, we would have to fine him and then the bond would go towards the fine, or however that works. We can't just, we can't just administratively take the bond without some sort of financial.
And I, I don't want to punish the contractor as much as a, you know, but anyway. So let's get back to.
Can we write a letter to the air pollution control board asking them to take the most stringent action because of the negligence in the situation?
They already had issued a notice of violation. And actually Oliver just handed me a piece of paper dated April 29th that says that they received settlement checks of a thousand dollars, 500 from each of the owners, and they've satisfied the civil portion of their agreement and they're bringing the matter to a close.
Hmm. Seems cheap.
And, I mean, just as a side note, since you're talking about removing the existing garage building, I did call both air pollution control district and Slow County Environmental Health and ask if either of them had the ability to force removal of a building that had hazardous materials, and they said not unless it could be proven that it was a public threat off of the property. And I don't think we have the authority.
Yeah, which I think is what Michael Tiffany was referring when he was standing up here.
But again, it, it isn't an issue of a, of a, of a present public threat. We have a plan for demolition and we know. a plan for demolition, and we know absolutely that those sheds will be demolished as part of that demolition plan, whether it's today, tomorrow, or the next day.
We, we don't know that.
Yeah, I don't think we can say that.
We do not know that.
We can't say that this owner's responsible for that, I mean.
I think, yes, at some point that probably will happen, but that's not what's in front of you, that's the, that's the thing, it's not part of the applications, they're not proposing to demo all of those things right now. We can only take action on the projects that are in front of us.
So I want to return to the whole notion of segmentation, I mean, if we were, if we were facing an elaborate, complicated demolition plan in which there were a dozen buildings, we would not permit a building to be demolished, and then sometime in the future, we would examine it again and have a second building demolished, and sometime in the future, examine it again for a third. We would require that the whole thing be studied as one, would we not?
Again, all of the mitigation measures on the project would cover if they wanted to come in and do more of it, I think, I mean, we, I mean, they weren't in front of us, so we didn't analyze it, but they could do that. You, you see modifications to permits all the time, don't forget that, this is not different than all the other permits that you see, you see major modifications come before this board on a monthly basis almost, right? Like, almost every project down the embarkadero, if it's not going to be a brand-new redo of a facility, is a major modification to original permit. So it's like that, okay? You're just looking at the project that's in front of you, I mean, we, I mean, so it's, you're saying segmentation, but it's demo, and we probably have all the conditions that we need and all the mitigation measures on the project to deal with demolition of anything that's out there now, I, I can't say that for sure, because we haven't analyzed those specific structures and then compared them to the mitigation measures. We can certainly do that, though, if you make the decision to uphold the appeal and we bring it back to you as a regular permit.
Which I think is the answer at this point, that's kind of the only thing we have to do that's either uphold the appeal or deny the appeal, I mean, that's really what we have in front of us.
Right. So if we didn't, if we uphold the appeal and require a major modification to the, to the existing permit, then at least we could see, we could request testing of the site where the sheds were and of the, of the remaining sheds. So, uh, that's where I think I'd.
I'm moving to make a motion.
If I've got support on that.
Is that part of what they're doing anyhow, though?
I think we're going to require that as part of the closeout for the original permit.
Okay.
And that will be slightly expanded because of this occurrence, so we'll cover more area, entire site, and it could also include testing the existing garage building so that we know for sure what that is.
I, I think we're kind of stuck in all of our minds, because if the applicant had followed and done what he was supposed to do.
Yeah, we wouldn't be here.
We wouldn't be here. Well, we might be here, because there, you know, I think there's concern among the public, was it appropriately done, but if there had been the monitor, if there had been the meetings beforehand, if, um, you know, if asbestos had been in the notification, we're removing these buildings because they have friable asbestos and we're concerned about protecting the neighborhood, you know, I, I think it's because the guy jumped the gun, you know, so, and we feel like we want to punish him for that.
And, and quite frankly, having him come back with major modifications is a, is a fairly major time delay, which is more money than we could ever come up with our fines.
I really think the choice of major versus minor comes down to, there was, I, I don't know motivation, but I do think it was time-wise, and, and the fact is, the minor process, he felt he could take advantage of by this process, and we need to say it's a major process, because it has, if they were wood structures with no hazardous materials, we wouldn't be having this discussion. The fire hydrants aren't raising a, a discussion, the fire hydrants weren't made out of plutonium, you know.
Well, it's also the fire hazards, hydrants was probably better to be removed so that they wouldn't be, you know, somebody wouldn't think that they were operable.
They were operable, exactly.
I don't, I don't even mind that it was an administrative permit, because that would have been sufficient too, had he in fact followed the provisions of the administrative permit. And so again, I want to reiterate that I, I don't want there to be a suggestion that somehow this was beyond the scope of the community developments office's administrative permit power.
I'll, I'll add a finding based on, I mean, so one of the findings can be that he did the work without the actual permit in place, hence the reason you're elevating this to the planning commission, I can add that in if you're interested in there.
Yes.
Okay, I will add that.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Thank you, pleasure.
I would like to move that we uphold the appeal of minor modification, MIN 19-001, a modification to CUP 440 and CDP 500, and require that the applicant reapply for the demolition of the pump house buildings as a separate permit. Does that sound right?
I'll second.
Could we also, um, for with a major modification, could we add as a major modification, and then also something that, to, to investigate the assoc, the, the other structures on sites for hazards?
Either one. With the guidance to staff that this comes back to, as a major modification for the commission to review.
Okay.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
All right.
I think so. Confer on your second.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, further discussion on the motion or the second?
I will stand by my request, request, mind you, that we have a, a formal explanation from the owner and the contractor given to this commission at the time of the major modification.
Good. All right, let's call the question.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Barone.
Aye.
Commissioner Ingraffia.
Aye.
Chair Lor.
Yes.
Okay, let's, it's nine o'clock, let's take, let's take five minutes and do a quick break, and be back in about five minutes, and I apologize for item B2. We'll be back shortly.
Yep.
Okay. Well, welcome back, call the meeting back into order. At this point, we will hear item number B2, it's case CDP 19-004-CUP 19-01, it's 2790 Indigo Circle in Morro Bay, and can. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Lor, and good evening, commissioners and members of the public. This project before you tonight is a request for a coastal development permit and conditional use permit to build a new single-family residence on a vacant parcel at 2790 Indigo Circle in the northern cluster of the Cloisters subdivision. The applicant is Shilpa Patel, and the agent is Will Roth. The site is zoned coastal resource residential golf course and planned development, and is located within the coastal commission appeals jurisdiction. The project as designed meets all applicable development standards from the city's zoning ordinance. This is an image of the existing 7,291 square foot parcel as seen from Indigo Circle that gives context of the site as it currently sits. This is the site plan that illustrates the proposed 2,424 square foot home with a 420 square foot attached garage. It also shows the recessed front entryway and recessed garage, designed to meet the standard set forth in the Cloisters design guidelines, which I will discuss more in the coming slides. Additionally, it shows the landscaping plan, which includes drought-tolerant plants, as well as permeable pavers and concrete step pads. These are the simulations of the proposed development that show the architectural details, colors, and materials of the design. As you can see, the project is designed with horizontal and vertical elements and varying ridge heights and wall planes. So as discussed, this project is designed to meet the requirements in the Cloisters design guidelines. The Cloisters Architectural Review Committee also wrote letters confirming the project's compliance both with the original submittal and with the subsequent resubmittal after the corrections were made to the plans, after recommendations from staff. The project has elements of a common craftsman-style home that is one of the approved types in the Cloisters. The project incorporates horizontal and vertical articulation, varying ridge heights and wall planes in a covered recessed front entryway. It has a low-pitched gabled roof and composite shingles. The garage is set back five feet from the front building facade as required by the Cloisters design guidelines. The materials are natural, and the color scheme is simple and balanced. As for the city's approved residential design guidelines, the project is compliant with regards to relationship to existing homes, as it is similar in style and bulk to the other homes in the Cloisters subdivision, scale and mass, as it meets the height and lock coverage requirements for this area, and the houses are all relatively similar in size in this neighborhood. Surface articulation, as there are varying ridge heights, wall planes, colors, and materials, as I've mentioned before. Building orientation, as the front entryway is recessed but still visible from the street. Garage and driveway design, as the garage is set back five feet from the main facade, and the door is visually interesting and fits well with the overall design. Building materials, as they are natural and part of the approved list for the Cloisters design guidelines. And architectural elements, as the house utilizes horizontal and vertical articulation, varying materials, and a simple color scheme, all as required by the Cloisters design guidelines. Notice of this project was posted at the, posted as required at the site and published in the San Luis Obispo Tribune newspaper on April 26, 2019, and all property owners and occupants of record within 500 feet were notified of this evening's hearing and invited to voice any concerns. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the planning commission adopt resolution 09-19, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for permit number CDP 19-004 and CUP 19-01 for the proposed single-family residence at 2790 Indigo Circle. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any ex parte communications? Any questions for staff? Okay, then I'll open it up for public comment if the applicant would like to come forward.
My name is Will Roth, I'm the architect on the project, thanks for the report, Willow. I had something prepared, but it's been a long day, so I'm just gonna leave it at what it is. I mean, the site constraints, the curb and gutter were already in place, so they kind of defined the style of the house as it is, so if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, seeing as we have no other members in the audience, we'll, if you'd stay at the podium.
Sure.
I have one, I have one question, one of the, the, the architectural design guidelines for the, for the Cloisters are pretty strong on segmented garage doors, you know, so why did you go with a, a single garage door instead of a segmented one?
Just logistics-wise, to get into garage, two-car garage, it makes a whole lot more sense to drive into a two-car garage than have a divider in the middle, and that's pretty consistent with a lot of the other houses out in the Cloisters area as well.
Okay. Anybody else?
Nice design.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Oh, we'll just.
Everything procedurally is okay with Cloisters on this?
Yes, we have the, I attached the letters.
So they saw this, they approved it?
Yes.
Okay.
Twice.
Okay. You guys good? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission here. Uh, any discussion? Okay, you got a motion?
This can't be that easy.
Yeah, that would be it, don't start until you got the permit.
There wasn't any asbestos in this, was there?
Are we okay with that?
Yep.
I mean, I feel like especially if it's been approved by the group that has all these extra.
Guess we're gonna have a little discussion then, yeah.
Requirements, I'd, I'd go for it.
You know, like, you know, I've, I've dealt with several of these, I've designed and built, you know, several down there, and the only thing I see that really stands out was that the preference for two garage doors and a step-back front, front facade on that, and, but I, but it is consistent with several of the houses right, adjacent to it, so I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna stand on the desk here and jump up and down for that, so.
I think it's, I think it's a fine design, fits right in, I don't, I don't have any issues with it.
Okay, let's pull, get a motion then.
How do I do this? I move that we approve coastal development permit, CDP 19-004, and conditional use permit, CUP 19-01, for coastal development permit at 2790 Indigo Circle. Is that enough?
That's how you do it.
Okay, then.
I second.
Will you also say that you adopt resolution?
Oh, yes, and adopt resolution 09-19, exhibit A.
Second approved?
I continue to second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, let's, any discussion? Okay, let's call the question.
Okay. Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Barone.
Aye.
Commissioner Ingraffia.
Aye.
Chairman Lor.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 5-0.
Sorry you had to sit in those hard seats all that time, but, okay, thank you, guys. Okay, uh. Yeah, we can't leave yet, guys. Okay, new, uh, new business? We, we have none, unbusinessed, we have none scheduled. So planning commissioner comments and future agenda items and?
Yes, one thing out of this, Scott, is tonight, it's very frustrating to sit up here and look at the, the amount of, the enumeration of fines for something that was an egregious type of thing. The fee schedule I know was looked at at some point, is, is there a new fee schedule as part of the zoning code?
So, you're no more frustrated than I am with it, you know, it, for me to issue a hundred dollar fine is going to cost me a couple of hundred dollars. So, I, you know, I mean, it's, it just, you know, that just, that just seems wrong. We, we do need to take a look at it, it's something, I mean, they're not, they don't do anything to discourage people from doing bad things, um, so, you know, they, they might work for small, minor-type violations, but for stuff like this, they're largely ineffective. So you have to look at, you know, you know, resolution is through permitting and the process and those types of things, I mean, it is unfortunate, but we probably do need to have a different fee schedule as it relates to these types of things, specifically the projects that are ongoing, because we, you know, and probably have some sort of rationing fine schedule, and we are looking at our, our fees right now and updating them, so might be a good time to take a look.
I mean, when you think about it, it's more expensive to get a parking place with your business permit.
Right.
You know, at fifteen thousand dollars for a parking space, I mean, doing what they did should be a hundred and fifty thousand, not a hundred and fifty dollars, I mean, that's absurd, look at all the time this took us, and you, and your staff, and.
We've spent hours and hours and hours on it, and, I mean, no, I am, I am no less frustrated with the process than you.
Well, the cost of the, the appellate, filing the appeal was, was higher than the cost of the funds.
It was free.
It was free for the appellate?
It's in the coastal appeal zone.
Because they won, right.
Well, to that point.
Well, it's free, period, they're in the coastal appeal zone, so we don't charge for items in the coastal appeal zone. If you do charge, if you charge money in the coastal appeal zone, the coastal act rigs allow you to just go directly to coastal commission.
Okay.
So it would kind of, it kind of removes the process from the, you know, from the city's decision-making, you know, process, so, anyway.
Well, we're, we're updating all of our ordinances, and I'm wondering if this is a good time to maybe consider at least a cost recovery mechanism to, to recommend to the city council, I mean, if we did that, a cost recovery in a, in a, well, yeah, well, we can make that number whatever we want, we can make, we could charge five hundred dollars an hour for Scott, I'm sure he's probably worth it. You know, we do a cost recovery analysis.
I appreciate that.
And, you know, we recommend that at city council, that we don't lose money on these, on these egregious types of things, and, and I don't think that should be extraordinarily difficult to get pushed through.
Happy to take a look at it, I mean, this. I mean, this is, I mean, it's an issue, this, you know, magnified by what you saw this evening, but I mean...
Right. And situations where there is a fee associated with appealing, perhaps not in this situation, but I imagine there would be, and clearly, if the appeal is won, those costs should be borne by the applicant. And I'm also thinking that, I think also the applicants are often more sensitive to the loss of time than a fee, you know, so, you know, what could we do, as in, you know, rescind your current permit and make you go through a permit process or a reevaluation of your process? And that investigative process that might take several months, that could be a real deterrent to applicants in the future, I think, particularly...
Yeah, I mean, any application, we're limited by state law. We have permit streamlining requirements that are, you know, outside of our purview. So, we have to process applications in a timely manner. We have to make completeness decisions on applications within 30 days, you know, and then environmental determinations within, you know, short time thereafter. So, I mean, we're somewhat limited to, you know, it can't be a specified amount of time because we have shot clocks, basically, that are put in place by state law, so...
So, you can't have an arrangement where the violation of a permit is so egregious that you say, I'm sorry, we've now rescinded this permit and you have to begin the process over again?
I've seen ordinances that, and I'm not sure, you know, whether that's still acceptable or not, where they, if you go through a permitting process, they can kick you out of the loop, you know, if you're not successful for a year. I'm not sure, you know, where that lands. I haven't seen any recently. I just, I remember seeing some quite a while ago that did that.
Well, we want to be careful because generally, one, we want to be permissive in approving things rather than...
I understand that, but we want to reward good behavior and not reward bad behavior, and particularly in, you know, situations of large developments, you know.
Well, sometimes the code enforcement process can be lengthy.
It's almost always lengthy. When there's big issues, I mean, a lot of this stuff's resolved by talking to somebody, but I mean, stuff like this usually takes a while.
One thing, too, and I'm sure there's enough boilerplate in all of these permits that go out, but just because staffs approve something doesn't remove anybody from the potential civil litigation that could come up because of a decision, you know, just because we allow a permit to go through and then they don't do the things that are in the permit, that's not a staff issue that people should direct the anger. They've acted in negligence that potentially, if someone could prove harm, is a civil case, I would think.
I'm not even trying to play lawyer.
No, it's interesting to me.
But I mean, you know, people can sue people for anything, so...
It's just hard, like I said, staff doesn't have the expertise to look at all of these documents and interpret them as experts. We count on this checks and balances of all these different agencies that review things like the Air Pollution Control Board.
It would have been set up just fine, you know, had it went through the way that it was supposed to.
Yeah.
It didn't happen, though, so, I mean...
We actually had, you know, we spent a lot of time working on that. We're talking about the previous project. We spent a lot of time working on that. We spent a lot of time putting restrictions on, and, you know, we, I thought we had thoughtfully, you know, conditioned the project, but the problem is, is when somebody comes in the dead of night and does something, there's no conditions you can make other than that's wrong, you know, and whether he did it intentionally or did it out of, you know, out of just, you know, agitation or wanted to get some, see something done or didn't think it was important, it was done, and it was done, and he was on notice through all of the hearings we had prior to that, that he had gone through that we had rejected and we'd reconsidered and set up other further conditions. And so, that's what surprised me so much about that project. Okay, any...
I have a question for the commission, if I can. So, we have a WORF CAC meeting on Thursday. Is there anything specifically the board would like to have answered at this meeting I can ask?
Okay. One of the things that I've noticed is, you know, the California, you know, high-speed rail has basically been quote-unquote "derailed" because of the escalating costs of mostly by high-paid consultants. So, that would just be a concern I would have, is what are we doing or what is our, you know, what are our controls that the cost of this project isn't going to escalate to the benefit of the consultants? And is it better to have that expertise in-house for this project, for $123 million project? Or is it better to have the consultants to keep the costs down? They're not paying the bills, so that's, I guess, my biggest concern with the project. Okay. Community Development Director's comments.
So, I have a, I do have a question for you all. We, checking your vacation schedules coming up. We do have Commissioner Lucas out on the 18th and the 2nd, I believe, 18th of June and 2nd of July. Are there any of you also taking off? So, I'm checking, I'm doing a quorum check, basically, because I don't need to tee up a bunch of stuff on an agenda when we don't have a, you know...
I think I'm looking at being gone on the 16th of July, our 2nd-July meeting, whatever that is.
Okay, I'm going to be gone from the 5th of September to the 28th of September.
I'll send you an email. I don't know yet.
Fair enough. I think I have no conflicts.
Okay, okay. Let me know if things change and you decide to take a, you know...
Well, I'll take a couple, but I think I don't, it doesn't interfere with the meeting stuff.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. All right. Do you want these plans back?
Okay, so, we'll adjourn meeting to the next regularly-scheduled planning commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Surf Street, on May 21, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everybody.